Have members of the LPC. And also, we do have staff. So please introduce yourself. And if you're a board member, which local district and region you represent? If you're an LPC likewise, and staff, what do you do at OSBA? So I'll start. My name is Sami Al Abdurabbo. I'm OSBA president, locally from Corvallis.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Nishik, and I'm the Acting Executive Director for OSBA. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chris Cronin, and I'm the President-elect for OSBA. I represent the Grant ESD and John Day.
Good evening. I'm Sonia McKenzie. I am the OSBA past president, and I serve on the Park Grove School Board and also the LPC. Good evening.
Haley Purcell, Chief Legal Officer and interim Deputy Executive Director for OSBA.
Good evening. I'm Bob Staringer, and I'm outside counsel for OSBA.
Hi, I'm Kristy Cottkey, Forest Grove School Board and new director for OSBA.
Jeff Krepber for Lamont ESD.
No problem. I got this.
Chrissy Wrights from Hood River County School District, OSBA Board of Directors.
Glenn Walker from North Clarkamas School District and OSP Board.
My name is Greg Kent. I'm from Burnonia School District locally, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the North Coast Region.
I'm Jackie Crook, and I'm from the South Coast ESD, and I'm Region 9, Roseburg, Goose and Curry Counties.
Good evening. I'm Dave Harvey, and the Director of Pace Administration.
Michael Miller, the interim Director of Legal Services.
Lori Satinspiel, Director of Legislative Services.
And I'm Efren Zamudio, your Legislative Service Specialist.
Guadalupe Martinez Zapata, Chair State Board of Education, Ex-Oficio Director.
Alex Polaski, Communications Director.
Kristen Miles, and the Director of Board Development.
Spencer Lewis, Director of Policy Services.
I'm Katrina Dowdy, and I am Montnomah Education Service District Board of Directors and on the OSBA Board representing Montnomah County.
Lickley Wiper, I'm the Chair of the Corvallis School Board and the Vice President of the Caucus of Color and also the Legislative Policy Committee Rep for the Caucus of Color as well.
Sarah Crawford, Phoenix Talent School Board, Southern Region LPC.
Hello, Tom Chavez, LPC 9 with Jackie, and I am the Chairman of the Glendale School District. Go Pirates!
Hi, everyone. Brenda Rivas, I am the Park Grove School District and LPC.
Hi, I'm Jill Zerschmid. I'm on the Tiger Twelton School Board, and I am the LPC Rep for Washington County, one of three.
Hi, I'm Abby Warren-Bier, McManville School Board, LPC for Yamhill-Polt Counties.
Hello, I'm Sandra Gomez. I'm with the Seaside School Board, and I am on the LPC. I don't always remember all the counties, the same one as Greg.
Good job.
Is this on? It says it's on, okay. I'm Tristan Irvin, new-ish OSBA Board of Directors and Tiger Twelton Chair of the Board.
Steve Lowell, I'm on the Clamath County School Board, and I'm on the OSBA Region 4 Representative.
I'm Dawn Watson. I'm on the Phoenix Talent School Board, and I am your Secretary Treasurer for OSBA.
Linda Hamilton-Lane, ESD 16 School Districts Representative, and the OSBA Representative for Lane Region.
Alonso Levedo, so with Lamont ESD, also representing OSBA Marion Region.
Clyde Rude, Lebanon Community School District, Region 10, Board of Directors.
Craig Albright, Dayton School District and Marion, or not Marion, Yamhill-Polt Region.
Sitting down, Chris Howitt, Gresham Barlow Board of Education, and also on the OSBA Board representing Montnomah County.
Nancy Thomas, Hillsborough School District and on the Board of Directors, new-ish. I like how you said that, thank you.
I'm Nicole Schott. I'm on the Condon School District, Chairman of that, and I am the Queen of the Rural Caucus. That's what Emily crowned me.
I'm Emily Smith, representing the Gorge Region on the OSBA Board from the Helix School District, which is outside of Pendleton, and I'm the OSBA Vice President for this year.
And online, Chris?
Hello, everyone. I'm Chris Duckworth. I'm an attorney at CDR Labor Law. I'm also a parent of two kiddos in Portland Public Schools, so I just wanted to say thank you all for the work you do to support public education in Oregon.
And Neelam?
Hi, I'm Neelam Gupta. I'm with the Lake Oswego School Board, and I'm also here on behalf of the Color Caucus and a board member through that.
Welcome. We have 21 board members present. A quorum is established. We can conduct business. And I want to welcome you all and share a few remarks and reminders. The reminders, please email Lanell Trissel if you would like to obtain an OSBA-issued email that we may have emailed something to the Board in the past. Just send her an email so she can send you a reminder, and you will be monitoring your email continually. The meeting is being recorded, and microphones have been provided at each table for your use. Because of that, if your microphone is on, side conversations will be picked up. It will make it really hard for those online, so be mindful of side conversations. Breakfast tomorrow morning for those staying at the hotel will be served from 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the Marion Room located on the south side of the lobby by Bentley's. So 7:00 to 10:00 Marion Room, south side of the lobby by Bentley's. Breakfast for those commuting will be served from 7:30 to 8:15 in the Coryson Creek Room on the second floor. Checkout is 11:00 a.m., so it is during our LPC meeting, so make sure you plan accordingly. Members of the LPC, you are excused or welcome to stay here. And members of the public, this is an open meeting, except when we have an executive session. And feel free to go about your night or enjoy being with us, whatever you'd like to do. But if we end up in an executive session, which I expect it to be about 30 minutes, then that's the time where we're going to excuse the members of the public and LPC temporarily. Other important housekeeping issues, bathrooms are from that side to the right. Dessert is right here, and water. Please stay hydrated and enjoy dessert. I want to take a moment, a personal privilege, to really thank staff for sharing some really good pictures and reminders of the work that we do. The Promise of Oregon, it's a campaign that we discontinued by end of last year. But our commitment to, for the kids, each one of them, the ones that we saw in the pictures, and the 545,000, 100,000 of them in Oregon is the purpose of this work. And I want us to reflect on what we would like to see Oregon by the end of this year, or even by end of June next year, when the legislature will be gaveling what could be a possible change for how we fund education and how we support students. And our role to really keep advocating for school boards, for legislative advocacy and the good work that we do. I'm really grateful to see all these great faces here to do that work. And since we did take attendance and the welcoming, the next item on the agenda is approving the agenda. The agenda for today's meeting has been proposed by the Executive Committee and staff to conduct business. If you have any questions, happy to answer them, or if there's any motions regarding approval of the agenda, now is the time to offer them. Oh, one more thing. If you would like to be recognized, and I will ask Don's assistance as the Secretary Treasurer, has been deputed as a new job, which is also recognizing people who raise their, what do you call this? Sense or name card to be recognized. Please raise it temporarily until I either see you or Don sees you, so we know who's on the docket. As a reminder, our working agreement and ground rules are there at the backside, the highlights of them, and there's copies at the corner there that you can obtain for the full list. So let's make sure we review them, and if you would like to speak or have a motion, raise it temporarily. And with that, Linda. Thank you. So is that a request of clarification where we are at? Or just making a note? Yes, this is the opportunity to approve the agenda or to propose amendments to the agenda if that's something that a board member wishes, and then the full board will get to decide.
Okay, yes. I'll make a motion to amend it.
What's the motion?
The motion is that we amend the agenda to have the special meeting requested by myself, from me, before.
So thank you for the motion. What I could say is I did send an email that I shared with you and the rest of the Board about possible pathways. So maybe for those who are in the room and for you, Linda, if it's okay, I'll provide a clarification, maybe a possible pathway to move forward. Is that okay? We do have in our bylaws two ways of establishing meetings. And the meetings are usually scheduled through the Executive Committee where we call for meetings, special meetings, and we meet. And this one is one of them, and the agenda has been noticed and established through what I would call the normal process. There are other approvals in the bylaws that allows 20% or more board members of the Board of Directors to call for a special meeting. Now, these are two parallel things that could happen. To my knowledge, did not happen for a long time or ever, but it did establish 20% of the Board have requested an agenda item. Sorry, of course, this is a special meeting. That special meeting is not today. Today is the special meeting that has been established by the Board through the normal process of providing an agenda item and staffing for the regularly scheduled business. It is the prerogative of 20% or more of any board members to ask for a special meeting and to be scheduled and to be noticed accordingly and to be held accordingly. And that is the 3:00 p.m. Saturday, which is the soonest that could happen. Understanding the intent that you wanted the agenda item that you wish to discuss prior to this meeting or at this meeting. Counsel have provided language that you could use to ask the full board, because now this is the meeting of the Board, to consider adding any agenda item to the regularly scheduled meeting.
I make a motion that the special meeting that was called for and that was granted by bylaws, that we have it prior to this meeting shortly. And you said, I didn't ask for a motion, this agenda, this was conveyed some time ago. I asked for the special meeting back on November the 17th, but that's besides the point. You said make a motion today and let people vote to have it, the meeting today. I mean, it's a short agenda from what I see. I mean, we can have it at the end or however. But you said make a motion, so I make a motion that we move the special meetings requested by the Board of Directors approved by, according to the bylaws, that it be moved up prior.
So with your permission, I will pass on the email I shared with you, and I'll provide an explanation how we can move forward, if that's okay. So in the email that you will have, and the Board has access to it as well, there is a sample motion that's slightly different from the motion that you mentioned because it's out of order. The Board cannot establish a new meeting today at 6:30 p.m. different than the one that we noticed for 6:30 p.m. today with a specific agenda. That meeting has already been established and is already in order, and we are convening with a specific special meeting. The one that you called for cannot be overriding the one that's already been established. However, the email that you have provides you with a language which, yeah, agenda item that you wanted in the special meeting can be considered by the full Board to be added to today's meeting. So while it's not necessarily establishing a special meeting alternatively to where we are right now, but it provides an agenda item that could be considered in the same meeting.
I move to amend the proposed agenda to add healing session as an agenda item to take place immediately after the executive session with Linda Hamilton and the discussion leader.
There is a motion by Linda and seconded by Steve. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
So in looking at the bylaws, looking at our information about meetings and the information that you have provided with the 20% of board members who've asked, as well as having an interest in doing this. I am a little bit concerned that this item is bigger than just an agenda item to add at the end of our meeting tomorrow. And without some preface and without some support for it, I would be in opposition to having anything added to the end of this weekend's meeting. Whether or not it gets, it should be scheduled at a different time and soon, and not, I realize, I know which meeting you're talking about, that we did need to have some closure with that. However, I don't think that having an amendment to the agenda to add an additional meeting is going to allow us all to be prepared to have good conversation on that, as well as timing that whether or not any of us can stay and we have a quorum. So that's, I would vote against, I would recommend voting against this amendment and looking to the leadership to have a meeting, a special meeting with just that as a single topic.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. With, we will observe some recommendations from Robert's Rose of Order, which is all those who've spoken will speak again after anybody else wishes to speak, and then we'll go back to those who have spoken again. So with that, who would like to be recognized? There is no one else wants to be recognized? Craig, and then we'll see who's next.
I would just strongly recommend that we stop kicking the can down the road. You know, frankly, Sammy, your confidence as Director is eroding by continuing to do so. I have supported you, but I'm starting to have concerns that we are getting to a point where we are going to cease to be effective as a body if we don't take care of the division within this House.
Thank you, Craig. Yes, please. Chris?
I would just ask at the point of order that at this moment, we are discussing the merits of the motion that Linda made as to whether we should add a healing session as an agenda item to this meeting. And that should, our directors should confine their remarks to that particular item specifically.
Thank you. Board members will confine their remarks to the motion. Jeff?
And I just want to, a point of order, that this meeting was requested on November 17th, and you had six board members say that they wanted this meeting, and it was ignored by Linda. Or it was ignored, and Linda's request was ignored by the OSBA leadership. And so at what point are we going to have this conversation? Because it's mid-April now, and she requested it mid-November. And I was able to crest my special meeting and have it approved within about two weeks, and then I canceled it at the request of OSBA. She's now waiting almost six months, and I think that's unprofessional, and I think there's a reason behind it.
Other comments to the motion? Linda?
I'm going to speak, I'm going to speak to the motion that Chris gave me, that I have read. It is getting very, very frustrating that we're stuck in this position. And yes, I have been waiting. Yes, I specifically conveyed over three weeks ago that this be on the, to date, the 19th, before we even move forward. And I understand some of it, and I understand what Chris Howlett is saying, but a lot of peoples in this room don't know how long this been going on since November the 12th and that I asked for this meeting, November, special meeting November the 17th per bylaws. And it is, we cannot move forward without a healing session. And I don't know what, why there is such a roadblock that we not have this healing session. And many people have called me and spoke to me, including the Executive Board members. And Salam, I don't know where he is. And it has to take place for healing. That's new peoples in here that never had their orientation, that's peoples walking in blind, that's feelings hurt. We can't move forward. This is not pointing to failing. I'm sure some people should understand what a healing session is.
Linda, thank you.
And you are, Ray wrote in this, it's sort of like Mopins, Timmy, you read through all that, and I listened to you, and it was a bunch of stuff that's unnecessary. And I know we can move forward on this. Quit trying to block it, please. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
I'm staying what the attorney told me to say. Quit blocking it. It's our right as Board of Directors, every one of us who have been elected here by our region, it's our right per bylaws.
Thank you for the remarks.
Thank you.
Members should refrain from a domino attacks or from calling members by their name. I will refrain from calling any comments toward me personally out of order. I'll leave it up to the Board, just to make sure we establish the quorum with each other. Let's talk to the motion, and let's not talk about individuals. If it happens to any member of the Board, I'll call it out of order. I'm going to take it with an open heart, but let's stay to the topic, should we add an agenda item or not? So with that, Chris?
So, Mr. President, we have a motion on the floor. Motion's been made to have the healing session take place tonight at this meeting after the executive session. It's been moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. We could keep discussing, or we could vote on this motion and then get our vote, and every board member will have an opportunity to vote yes, to have the healing session tonight directly after the executive session, or vote no. In which case, if the vote is no, that means then the special session, which has been scheduled for 3:00 tomorrow, will go ahead and take place. Okay? That's what the vote is. The vote is yes, we'll have the healing session take place tonight directly after the executive session, in which probably that would mean that our facilitated session with Salam Nor may not be able to take place because the healing session would take precedence. Or if you vote no, then we will remain with the agenda as is, and the healing session will take place tomorrow. So I call for the vote unless there's others in session.
Before we call to the vote, there's a raised hand. We spoke twice, so I'll say we cap it here. Usually you go two rounds. But if there's no objection, please go ahead after Emily, and then you want to be recognized?
She was going to say.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wants to be recognized? Jackie? Please, Jackie.
My concern about putting it off till tomorrow at 3:00. I have a six-hour drive, so does Chris Cronin, and it's six hours, it's 9:00, and who knows when it's going to end? And I'd rather stay up a little later tonight than drive at midnight. So I'd like you to, those of you who don't have to drive, I would like you to consider that.
Anyone else wants to be recognized? Emily?
I just have a procedural bylaws question. Is it a simple majority vote that adds something to the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And to answer that, the answer is yes. And also, I want to just highlight something, and to be really impartial here, I'm not going to speak for the motion or not. I want to just make sure the Board is appraised of their options. Now, we're considering adding an agenda item as a Board. In our working agreement, adding agenda items is prescribed, I'll get back to you, Nancy, and then Linda. Our adding agenda items is prescribed through a certain expectations. And also, we do have, in January, we voted on a process how we can submit and writing agenda items. This topic has not been submitted through that process. Nevertheless, I want to also recognize something else. So one thing is our working agreement, our process that we have voted on, we expected to do, and we did not have that proposed to the Executive Committee through that process. Also, I want to recognize that our bylaws give the right for 20% of the members to convene the Board for a specific topic, and that has been requested. It is in order, and the soonest we can do is 3:00 p.m. tomorrow. However, the intent of those who requested the meeting was sooner the better today. So with that, I will call this, I will allow this motion to be in order if there's no objection regarding to the working agreement, because it is the will of this Board to say we can suspend our expectation of these two things on the working agreement. Just to understand, there is a very strong intent to discuss this. So because of that, we will allow it, we will vote on it. But with that, I will move forward with Nancy, and then Linda? Okay, Nancy and then Linda.
Sorry, new and not understanding all of the bylaws, is there a rule with regard to the number of times that a member is able to speak on a single topic or any topic during the general meeting?
There's nothing in our rules or expectations. It is up to the Board, and the Presiding Officer sometimes on behalf of the Board will move the discussion and the expectations that we're seeing right now. If you haven't spoken, you speak before someone who spoke before. And if there's no objection, I will continue entertaining more topics until someone may move to call for a question, then we'll end debate. And with 2/3 majority, we end debate, and then we go for a vote. So if, to make sure we're fair, I'm going to allow for multiple, one person to speak more than twice unless the Body wants to do that, to move on. Then Kristen, Linda.
I just wanted to have a clarification because we do have LPC members in the room right now, and I'm assuming that if we do this after the executive session, that this is for the OSBA Board members to do. So at that point, the LPC members, they are going to be excused prior to the executive session anyhow? What's? What's, what's the, what's the stepping through here?
Yeah, so to clarify, this agenda item is a public meeting, observes public, this agenda item is noticed as a public meeting, and it was requested as a public meeting. So we have to refrain from any confidential information, and also, it will be open for the public, LPC, board members, any member of the public, the media, and the recording will be accessible to the public. So to that point, the agenda item requested did not include any executive session provisions as required by law. Am I right here? Thank you. Any other person wants to be recognized? Linda?
I just wanted to reiterate that-
I'm sorry, Mike.
I just wanted to reiterate that I, I noticed many people have spoken over and over and over and over and over, and that's sort of what got us here November 12th. So I was a little confused that we only get two roundabouts, but sound like that's been clarified, that we can have more than two roundabouts. Is that correct, President? Because I know you-
There's no objection. I'm not going to have the two rounds only rule. I'm going to allow the discussion as long as the time limit is there, and then we're gonna end debate unless the board wants to extend the time limit. Approving the agenda is absolutely overdue. But if you, if you have more, more information to the motion, please go for it.
No, I would stick with the motion, and the motion is that we have this executive meeting immediately after this special meeting, immediately after the executive session, and not 3 o'clock tomorrow, when you and as well as others in here know, at the end of the board, at the end of these meetings on Saturday or Sunday after LPC, we go home, and people will just leave. And this is, this special meeting for Board of Directors per bylaws.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further? So you were calling for a question. I would say, I would say if you would hold on that, because if there's no further discussion, we will save ourselves one more vote. So as shared in my message to the board earlier this week, Director Hamilton and five other board members have requested a special meeting for what they describe as a healing session. Under our bylaws, I was required to schedule the special meeting because they make up at least 20% of the board membership. The directors who requested the special meeting, directors Linda Hamilton, Lain ESD, Lain Region, Position 6, Steve Lowell, Klamath County, Southeast Region, Position 4, Clyde Rude, Lebanon Community Schools, Len Benton, Lincoln Region, Position 10, Alonso Oliveros, Wilamet ESD, Marion Region, Position 12, Jackie Crook, South Coast, ESD 7, Douglas, South Coast Region, Position 9, Greg Kents, Vernonia, 47J, North Coast Region, Position 14, and the director who requested the special meeting asked if it can be held before tonight's meeting, but that was not feasible for several reasons. So because I knew that this is, was an important to Director Hamilton, I advised them of the process they can follow to ask the board to add their topic near the beginning of tonight's meeting. That way, the board can decide whether it will be taken up tonight, or at the next possible time for a special meeting, which is tomorrow afternoon after the LPC meetings. If we don't cover this topic tonight, we have a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon where this would be the sole topic. We already have a full agenda tonight with important topics to cover, including Salam facilitating a discussion that has been planned for us. I personally wanted to wait to hear in more details what Director Hamilton is asking the board to do before we decide with the recommendation. It is finally the decision of this body on how to move forward. So I'm going to read the motion as stated, and I think it is somewhere here. The motion was to amend the proposed agenda to add the healing session as an agenda item to take place immediately after the executive session, with Linda Hamilton as the discussion leader. The motion was made, properly seconded, and the discussion has ended. Now we will go for a vote. A vote aye will add this topic after the executive session. A vote nay will not add this topic to the executive session, and we are obligated by the bylaws to meet according to the notice at 3:00 PM tomorrow on Saturday. I would like to call for a roll call of votes.
What's the good for the question?
So, thank you. Please, please ask to be recognized, just to make sure we're in order. We can discuss that element. Right now, we're discussing adding the agenda. We did not ask about how we will staff the agenda, and we can talk about that afterwards if that's okay.
Yeah, I just was making correction because you said- I was making correction because you said discussion by Linda. I can lead the discussion, but I want Mr. Salam to help. He's helping with, he's part of this whole healing process, is my understanding, from the last meeting.
Okay, so we will call the vote now, and there's no further discussion will be entertained. Is there any questions about the votes, or is the vote clear for you? We will, we will ask for a roll call vote. And maybe repeat the, repeat the votes after they say their name on the microphone. So he says aye, and then he says aye. Yes, yes, please.
Jeff Crapper?
Aye.
Aye for Jeff Crapper.
Chris Cronin?
No. No for Chris Cronin.
Yes.
Aye for Jackie Crook.
Katrina Doughty?
No for Katrina Doughty.
Neela, are you muted?
No.
Neela, can you just say that again, please?
No. Did you hear me?
No for Neelam Gupta. Yep, thank you.
Linda Hamilton?
Yes for Linda Hamilton.
Chris Howard?
Abstain for Chris Howard.
Tristan Irvin?
No for Tristan Irvin.
Greg Kents?
Yes for Greg Kents.
Kristi Clark?
No.
No for Kristi Clark.
Steve Lo?
Yes for Steve Lowell. No for Sonia McKenzie.
Yes.
Yes for Alonso Oliveros. Yes for Chrissy Reitz.
Clyde Rude?
Yes for Clyde Rude.
No.
No for Nicole Schott.
Emily Smith?
Yes for Emily Smith.
Nancy Thomas?
Yes for Nancy Thomas.
Yes.
Yes for Glenn Walker.
Yes.
Yes for Don Watson. 13 to 7, yes, with one abstain.
13 to 7 with one abstain, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Now, we still need to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented?
With microphone, please.
Oh. First time everyone's ever-
I know. I move to approve the agenda as presented. As amended, as amended.
All right. It's been moved by Director Karki to approve the agenda as amended, and it's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Uh, yeah. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. We're gonna go with an objection vote. Is there any objection to the motion? Seeing there is no objection, the motion passes. Now we have approved the agenda. The next agenda item is an executive session. For folks who are going to have to leave us, please feel free to be welcome back again after the doors are open. The expectation is half an hour, but we'll let you know. And before we enter to an executive session, I will read some remarks. The OSBA Board of Directors will now enter executive session to consider client, attorney-client privileged information or records that are otherwise exempt by law from public inspection regarding legal advice. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192660, Section 2, Section F, to consider information or records that are exempt by law from the public inspection. ORS 192355, Section 9, and ORS 40, Section 225. OSBA staff, members, Emily Nishik, Haley Purcell, Annalyn Eltristle, and OSBA Board Legal Counsel, Chris Duckworth, Michael Porter, and Bob Seringer shall be allowed to remain in the room during executive session. Members of the media are permitted to attend. However, media are not permitted to disclose information discussed in the executive sessions. All other staff, members of the public are asked to leave the room. No decisions will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session, and the session participants will again join that meeting room. The meeting recording now can be paused at this time. The meeting, the meeting will come back to order. The meeting will come back to order. The next item on the agenda as approved by the board is a board, an agenda item called healing session. As a reminder, this is a matter that was proposed by a motion, and this matter will be limited to 30 minutes unless a majority of the board votes to extend the matter for another specified period of time. All staff who are not required to be present, especially access to the meeting, are free to leave. I have, I have heard from at least one board member who needed to be excused for one reason or another. So I'll ask maybe Don, not now, but maybe after we're done, just telling people that, well, now actually, if there's anybody outside who wants to come, and after we're done, that's, we will, we will, we are moving from one agenda to another. So the gallery is available for anybody who would like to come or go if they want to. So now, this is the, and we will notify anybody else about the next agenda item. So this is where we are, 30 minutes, and we will start now. I believe Linda is going to be the chief speaker of the topic. I would like to ask the board for courtesy to give Linda and the six board members who requested the meeting on Saturday to speak first, and then if there is any other comments or questions or discussion that we follow it. The objective, I don't have it in writing, so probably I would recommend Linda to describe the objective of the session before going into its details, and then how we move forward. Is that acceptable for you, Linda?
So I asked for this, excuse me, I asked for this meeting as a healing session from back in November, when our board had some very tough conversation, and some very tough actions, and there are still some unanswered things, and people were hurt, and things were said that was not acceptable to probably some of us, and not healthy for some of us who deal with, you know, racism and PTSD and trauma, and among other things. A lot of us was affected by it. So I asked for a healing session to move forward, to have some discussion so that this doesn't happen again, and to recognize what we are here as Board of Directors. Those of us that are here as Board of Directors that are elected by our region, who elected us to be here, we also represent our region, and not just our students. And so I asked for this meeting, and I asked Salam if he would help facilitate it for us, and hear the voices from everyone in here who would like to say something that are Board of Directors and who was there present November 12th as we started moving forward, and that things have carried on since then as well. And so I asked for this meeting because we can't heal and we can't move forward without having those discussions, and those discussions can be very, very tough, and not always pleasure to the soul, but as adults, we have to learn to respect one another and be kind to one another, whether we want to or not. You can say what you want, but in the presence of the person, be respectful and kind to one another. And we all come from different walks of life, and some people have different styles and perspectives and communication styles. And I remember saying once, I, because I vote or say what I do, say things that I do, vote the way I do, or say things, that doesn't mean I doesn't like you. We all different, and I'm not a follower, and some of you are not followers, and I'm not a status quo. Therefore, I may not agree with you, and I may not walk you in. So we all come from different walks of life, but I want us to respect that and come to be kind to one another. I love people. I love people. And people are relationships, building relationships. And we may not always agree, we may disagree, and it's okay to agree and disagree. It's okay. But don't go mean because of the decisions I make, or the walk I walk, or the side I take. So I asked for this because I felt that that's what happened. I took side, and it wasn't taking side, I supported someone I feel like I got to go for, for not supporting and going to the side with the people of color. And that's not the way it should be for anybody. We are all individuals, and we all should make decisions led from our heart. And if it's not from your heart and you're a follower, you need to evaluate yourself. But be who you are, not what someone else wants you to be. And we're all here for the students. So. I'm running over to you to start this healing process so we can move forward.
Thank you.
And we only have a half an hour, so Sammy, it was my understanding.
With, with permission, very quick procedural votes, and I will promise I'll pause the 30 minutes for that. Staff have been working for about now three, four months with Salam and with board members to prepare for a session that was previously scheduled, contracted with Salam to facilitate it. It is my understanding from hearing from you today, the overlap is very strong between your intention and the scheduled work. So just without objection from the board, allowing Salam to staff this agenda item seems to be very in line with the intent and overlapping. Just want to make sure the board is agreeing to have Salam serve on that purpose, and give him grace for the preparation that he has, he might need to pivot. Salam agreed that he will be willing to do that. So if there's no objection, the board will move forward by having Salam facilitate that conversation as proposed. There's no objection?
I have something. I feel like you're taking this meeting over again, Salam. I mean, not Salam. Salam has a clear understanding of my- Salam has a clear understanding of my objection. Well, Sammy, I, I'm getting so, so to, I'm trying to do this for the good of all of us and some, I feel like you're just gonna take it over and run it the way you want to, no matter what.
Linda, uh, I promise I will not say a single word after this until-
Okay, 30 minutes we have, so we have to hear from everybody in here.
As long we're abiding by the rules-
If they want to say something, thank you.
One more rule, I want to make sure we follow up and there's no objections, Salam take it over and we'll return for the 30 minutes.
Okay? Okay. All right. So I'll be honest with you, I have to pivot a little bit. And I did spend a little bit of time out there trying to think about how do we frame this conversation? So it's productive, it's meaningful, it's relevant, constructive, and leads to closure because that's what I hear Linda asking for. We need to get to closure so you can do exactly why you're here, what you're here to do, which is do the work of the Oregon School Boards Association. Do the work that represents the 197 school districts around the state and, uh, 550,000 kids, uh, which I, I commend you for and I'm grateful to you because I love this organization. I've always appreciated and admired the people in it, both staff and board members. And it's a lot of sacrifice to add to your board duty by taking on another responsibility with the statewide board, but, uh, you're here for a purpose and, uh, I, I just appreciate that and I want to say thank you for the work that you do. So I did have to pivot a little bit. There is a portion of my presentation that will apply that I would like to walk you through it because I think my work with you and especially today was going to get into your work. And I believe you can accomplish a lot of healing and trust and relationship building through doing the work. But what Linda said is absolutely spot on and I think Linda, you described it so beautifully. I mean, I feel like I don't have anything to add. I mean, it's, it's, we want to do exactly what you said is regain respect for one another, appreciation for one another, valuing for one another, honoring the fact that we all have different perspectives, different backgrounds, different beliefs, different values, but we're here together as a board and we just need to recognize that and appreciate it. So, um, I would like to do an activity with you, um, to kind of set up the conversation and Sammy, I apologize, we may need more than 30 minutes. I'm a social scientist by training, so I, I have the gift of gab sometimes and I apologize. So, but I think one of the things that is really important for us to acknowledge, when we are talking about healing, I think we have to pause and think about what is it that we're healing from, right? Healing implies harm. And it's a low level harm. It's not a big level harm, it's a low level harm. It means injury. Somebody was injured, somebody caused the injuring, so to speak. Somebody was harmed, somebody caused the harm. And I think it's also important to acknowledge, sometimes that's unintentional. No one intended to hurt anyone. However, and going back to what you said, Linda, what we do matter, what we say matter, how we say it, how we interpret it, how we perceive it, how we conceive it, et cetera, matters. So I think there will be some difficult conversation. This will be awkward, this will be uncomfortable, but I kind of want to put you in the right frame of mind to have this conversation. And I think at the, at the core of it is just recognizing the humanity of the people in the room. So just take a second, look at people at your table, look at people across the, the room. You know somebody here, right? Some of, who's the newest sport members? You renew, nope, nope. You guys don't know a lot of people, but look around, look around the room and just make eye to eye contact with people. And you don't even have to, to shout it, but you know something about that person, right? When you look, look around the room, please, look around the room, look, look at each other. You know something about that person. That person is, is a person. That person is a parent, a grandparent. They have siblings, they have children, they are a living being and just by virtue of that, we have feelings. And I have to tell you, my kids remind me of that every day. I screw up every day because sometimes of the words that just come out of my mouth. And the words are right, but the way they come out of my mouth is what often gets me in trouble. So I just want to acknowledge that we are human beings, we make mistakes. And what's important is really to acknowledge because the healing process really involves recognizing what we did. Take notes here while I was sitting out there, I gotta go back to my notes. It's acknowledgement of what somebody did. It's acknowledgement of how somebody was impacted. It's understanding of what we did and also understanding of how, how that impacted the other person. It's repair. And repair is not just saying sorry today, it's really what we do from here on. It's reconciliation, just acknowledging that my words hurt you, my actions hurt you and therefore I am sorry and you make a commitment to reconcile. Sometimes it's just reaching agreements and that may be part of what happens here today is we just reach agreements that we're not going to treat each other this way. We're not going to allow our board meetings to turn into whatever format, whatever happened in the past. And most importantly then, that individual commitment and the collective commitment. And the only one that can govern that is you as, as a board. So how many of you are familiar with the Arbingers Institute? Living with an outward mindset. I know Chris is. I've gave you guys some books, I hope you read them. Linda has gone through that training. Law enforcement actually is one of the few organizations and few sectors in the world, not just here in the United States, that go through that training. And the reason they go through that training is because they want the officers to see the humanity in the person that they're arresting. To see the humanity in the community that they are serving and to see them as people. Yes, I'm going to arrest you by the end of this conversation. You will be in the back of my car, but I'm still going to see you as a person and I'm going to treat you as a person. So I just want to walk through a, a couple of slides. This will be out of context because this is a two-day training and I'm just giving you literally just a blurb, so forgive me uh, if it appears to be a bit disjointed, that's not my intention. If you would go to slide eight, please. And the whole Arvinger, Living with an Outward Mindset philosophy is really about, yep, sorry about that. I had a lot of stuff up here. But you know, the, what's that? Yeah, just right there. And I can use my clicker from here on, right? Okay. So, um, I guess let me move slides over here if you don't mind so I can track where I'm at. Okay. Yes. So, um, their work is really about mindset, but it's not just fluff stuff, you know, that I feel good, I see you as a person. It's really a business model. It basically says, if you want to change behavior in individuals and in, and in organizations to be more productive and to be successful, you have to change mindset. And changing behavior is temporary, but if I can change someone's mindset and there is a process and a whole bunch of tools and, and steps you go through, then that is more lasting than just changing behavior. Because if I become aware of what I'm doing, how I'm doing it, and most importantly, why I'm doing it. And there's one of their books that I, I think shared with you is called, uh, Leadership and Self-Deception. They often refer to it as self-betrayal, which means I know I'm doing something wrong and I fall into that trap, but I stay in that trap and I never get out of it. And what happens is I start to justify my attitude, my behavior. So the mindset then leads to certain behavior, but in, at a very basic level, they basically say, there are two mindsets in the world. There's an inward mindset, mindset and an outward mindset. And I'm going to walk you through them really quickly here. So, uh, okay. So when I click this, my computer doesn't move, that moves. So I think I'm going to move over there if you don't mind. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. What's that? No, no, I'm good, thank you. Are you going to carry me over there? I appreciate it. That was very outward minded, trust me, it was not. So I appreciate it. Actually, Henry is incredibly helpful and, uh, and I appreciate that. So, so we have two mindsets, an inward mindset and an outward mindset. So what does an inward mindset actually mean, right? So based on their principle, inward means I'm looking inside, I'm looking at myself. And if you notice, the person is actually in what? The person is in a box, right? So an inward mindset essentially implies that I don't really see people. I don't see their needs, I don't see their objectives, I don't see their challenges. As Linda said, we don't know, I mean, you guys had a speaker that talked about what's in your backpack, right? You know, we don't know what's, what's in people's backpack, we don't know what they're carrying, we don't know what, you know, what their mindset is like and what actually contributed to that mindset. So an inward is somebody that really does not recognize other people, does not recog- that person doesn't recognize their needs, their aspirations, their goals, their priorities, et cetera. They are actually focused on their own objectives. So I am just exclusively focused on my objectives, my needs. And that may be due to pressure, that may be due to other circumstances that are happening in our lives, but we turn inward and we become the most important person in, in the relationship. Okay? So if, when that's the case, I start to see people, I start to objectify people. So people are a vehicle to me that I use to get my objectives done. There are obstacles that I blame and I try to move out of the way and then there are irrelevancies. So I start to ignore people because they just don't fit my mindset or my frame of preference and they're not useful to me. The opposite is an outward mindset. An outward mindset essentially implies that other people matter like I matter. I still have objectives, I still have goals, I'm driven. I still have a desire to accomplish everything that I set myself to accomplish, but I see people and their objectives and their goals and their priorities and their needs and challenges. Sorry, I shouldn't, I apologize. Like to use my hands when I talk. So, uh, other people matter to me. They, I care about them. Yes, it doesn't mean I'm soft and I'm going to forego my objectives, no. But I do care about them and they're part of my team. So as a board, being outward means everybody on this board really matters. Everybody's objectives and interests really matter because ultimately you're trying to achieve your board's objective, not just individual objectives. So when people matter to me, then together we can actually focus on results. If they don't matter to me, then I'm just going to be focused on my needs and I really don't care about the overall collective results. I'm going to move us quickly, I'm, I'm sorry again. Um, it's, as long as we're going to get more time for people to talk and express their interests. So how do we turn inward? So, um, if you're, if you're an outward minded person, you're focused on the mission and the objective, you want people to be a part of it, you're a collaborative person and you really care about everybody's interest in order to achieve your organization's interest. If you are an inward person, you are focused on yourself. So imagine two organizations and if you look at the inward diagram compared to the outward diagram, what do you recognize? What do you see? Don't just look at red and blue because that means absolutely nothing in this case. I know what somebody was saying. I'm sorry, go ahead. Together, yes. So, you know, when you think about this, um, you know, what is the focus? When you think about, when you see these diagrams, what's the focus of the people in each organization? People in the inward category, they're really focused on themselves. Sometimes they may be working actually in opposition of one another. Whereas people in the outward category, they're connected, they're working together, they're collaborating, they see each other, they see each other as partners and not as competitors. In which organization would you rather work? How many of you prefer to be in an inward organization? And, and some people do. Some people like to work alone, they like to work in silo, they like to be in a very competitive environment. And I've worked with people like that actually just recently. And one of them is a really, really close friend of mine and that's the counsel that I've always gave them. Is that you're just plowing over people, you know? In fact, he teaches this stuff and I always tell him, you're not following what you preach. But he's driven, he's very, very driven and he doesn't realize that he's actually objectifying people. So you could be a boss and have a lot of people working for you, thinking that you are actually an outward mindset, uh, an outward minded individual, but in actuality, you could be very inward because you're using them as objects, as vehicles, as tools. So which organization is likely to deliver more value to customers and why? I would choose the outward mindset. I think that one is more likely to be more cohesive, more connected and deliver better value and better product. So as you think about yourself, I'm not going to ask you to share out, but here's a continuum, it's often a continuum. You're not on this end or that end. We find ourselves sometimes in the middle. Depending on the situation, we may actually move and become outward or move to the left and become inward because we're human beings, we're driven by emotions and feelings and reactions. So that's just something for you to think about. So very quickly, these are called inward styles. So how do we turn inward? Does it happen just automatically? You wake up one morning and you decide, I'm going to be inward today, I'm going to be a jerk to everybody, right? Or do you wake up and say, wow, the sun is out, I think today is the day to be outward? Some people are like that. But in actuality, these are styles that we take on that are prompted by certain circumstance and much of it is based on how we see ourselves. I want to underscore that, how we see ourselves. And based on that, we have to think about how we show up as a result, right? So inward styles, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. So inward styles, we know what it's like to be outward. Others matter like I matter, want to work together, we want to achieve the mission and the objectives. Sometimes when we're outward, um, we tend to see ourselves in certain ways. So for example, let's, uh, let's say, uh, Steve, so Steve and I are coworkers, all right? Steve and I work together all the time and we're both working on a project. And I come across some information that I decide to not share with Steve. That information would be immensely helpful for Steve to do his work. But I decided I'm not going to share that with Steve. Okay? Is that an inward or an outward behavior? It's an inward behavior, so I've made the decision, I've taken the action, that I'm not going to do that. We may also suggest, I may, I may also suggest that it may be against my nature to be that way, but I made an inward move. I've decided that I'm going to be inward that day and not share with Steve this important piece of information. So what do you think happens next? Well, Steve doesn't know that I haven't shared with him. Steve thinks we're buddies and we are. But sometimes we turn inward based on the way we perceive situations and decisions that we make. So I could say to myself, well, I am really better than Steve, why should I give him that information? That's my information and I should just use it to advance my purpose, you know? So I could say, well, you know, I really need this opportunity. And yeah, it doesn't help Steve, but I need this opportunity. So there is this better than, you know, it's bad, I, I deserve it. I deserve this opportunity because I have this information. There's a lot more to go through here, but I'm going to go through it quickly. So there is this notion that I deserve this. I am better than Steve, I found the information, he didn't find the information. For all we know, it was right there under his nose, but he's lazy. He doesn't look at things the way I do, he's not as analytical, he's not as inquisitive as I am. I am better than him and therefore I'm not going to share the information. So now I've slipped into that I am better than mode. This becomes what we call the carry box. It's a mindset, it's a mind, it's an inward mindset style. I like to call it a carry box, simply because now you're in the box and you see the whole world through this box. So now I have to start justifying, why didn't I share it with Steve? Well, like I said- Well, like I said, you know, Steve comes to work late every morning, he gets all the perks, he just doesn't do his work, why should I give him that, that opportunity? I am better than him, I deserve this. So we call that self betrayal. Because under normal circumstances, I would have shared with him. But now I am in the box, I'm starting to justify, I'm justifying my actions, although they're not the typical actions I would take, but I've shifted into that mode of justification. And that becomes the way I see things, okay? In other cases, I may not share this information because I see myself as beneath others, meaning that, meaning for example, well, Steve doesn't really need this, Steve is smart, I'm not as smart as Steve, I, you know, I'm not just gonna give him this information because he may thinks, he may already have it, he may laugh at me because I have something that he already knows. So there's this worse than, you know, the, the worse than attitude. And that leads to sometimes the need to be seen. So I may not share the information then because I don't wanna be seen as worse than. I don't wanna be perceived as somebody that's holding on to something and then not sharing it or sharing it, and there's some perceptions and attitudes associated with, with that. Like I said, I need, there's a lot more to unpack here. But the gist of all of this is that the person that's sitting across the table from you sometimes is carrying some boxes. I carry boxes, I vacillate, sometimes I feel that I'm worse than. I'm not good enough. You know, who am I to give Steve this information? He's so much better than me. Or I may actually give him the information, but my motives are not the right motives. My motives is, I want everybody to see me as being kind and nice to Steve. But in actuality, I'm just self-serving here. I'm not really doing Steve a favor. It's just I have this worse than attitude and I want everybody to see me as the hero. Yes, sir? Yes, so we call that justification. And we start to play out all of these scenarios, actually, that's one of the scenarios that play out, but I'm not spending a lot of time on it, but one of them is that, you know, Steve gets all the breaks. Steve is privileged, Steve gets to have all of these opportunities and the boss doesn't pay any attention to me. So maybe this is an opportunity and it's a worse than scenario. You know, I feel worse than Steve, but this is an opportunity to just show the world what I can do, how smart I am. So what I typically do with this is we start to create scenarios, we put four posters around the room, and we create scenarios based on how you're, based on this example and where you are relative to these carry boxes, these styles. And I will give you a scenario and then you'll start to move to, you know, that, to which inward style you might be in, you know? So I have another scenario of a, you know, a boss that you don't really know or you don't care much about, and this boss asks you to work on a project with him or her. How would you approach that? What's your, what's your style? Do you approach it with a above others, that I deserve to be on this project? And therefore you start to treat people and see people differently? Do you see it, do you see yourself as a beneath others, a worse than? And you actually get suspicious that now you're under the watch, you know, the watch eye of the boss? So again, it's all about mindset. And we have to catch ourselves because we very easily can fall into these mindsets. And the reason I wanted to do this with you is because when we look at, I'm just gonna jump into the next slide, when we look at these four inward styles, being better than, I deserve, worse than, need to be seen as. So that, look at the self view, so when I'm better than, I tend to think I'm superior, I'm more important, I'm more virtuous, and I may feel impatient, you know? Yeah, I'm gonna be really impatient with Steve because he's just not moving along as fast as everybody else is. Instead of looking outwardly at Steve and say, how can I help you? Or say, what is it that I'm doing that may be contributing barriers in your way? It's all about mindset, and it's really important in the conversations that you have as a board, in the work that you do as a board member. And it's gonna be important in the conversation that we're gonna get into here momentarily. So worse than, I feel deficient, broken, powerless, discouraged, envious, resigned, need to be seen as, being watched, at risk, being judged, I feel anxious, stressed, overwhelmed. The boss asked me to work with them on this project and my, you know, I feel like I'm now being judged because I don't know this boss. Maybe the boss has not been outward towards me to help me see them as a person, so to speak. So we, like I said, we can get into a lot of different examples here, I'm gonna play this video really quickly, this is an example of Levana Givens. There are lots of videos that we actually show in this training, but this one pertains specifically to inward styles. And can we pause it? Can, can we go back? Nope. I wanna, the video, I wanna start the video from the beginning, please. Okay, uh, let's see. There we go. So what I love about this video is really simple, it's real, we've all been in this situation where you're too tired to go to a birthday party. I, I have, I will tell you until this day, I regret not going to a friend's funeral because it was too hard on me. But until this day, I wish I had gone because it was important to him and his family that I'd be there. And I've told him that many times. I was really inward, I was focused on myself and my needs. And I didn't wanna be sad, I didn't wanna be depressed, I didn't wanna see his family. And my focus was on my needs. I never stopped to say, well, what does the family really need from me? I never asked a question. I was just, in fact, I'll be honest with you, I used to be terrified of families. I'm much better now, I do, I do go to them. So, and we've all had these moments where we said, you know, we put our needs first. And it's not just in our personal life, but in our business world, in, in our work, in any environment that we find ourselves in. So the reason I wanted to do that is to just remind us that the people that sit next to us are people. And the way we treat them, whether we turn around and say hello to them, how are you doing? Or we just keep to ourselves and not bother, we have nothing against them, we're not upset with them, we're not unhappy with them, we're not unhappy that they sat next to us. We just, we're busy with something else. We're occupied with something else. That has an impact. I mean, you've all been in schools and when you see a kid and you say good morning to them, or people that just walk focused, you know, laser focused on something, you just say good morning to them and they're almost like startled, like, oh wow, somebody says good morning. So the point of it is impact. We have an impact on each other and that impact can be intentional. And when it is intentional, it does cause injury and harm. And we need to address that, and we need to correct it and make sure it doesn't happen, especially if the person is aware. But when the injury and harm happens unintentionally, it's still an impact. And I think we have to acknowledge that and we have to understand that we've gotta address that. So can you think of other examples when you might have turned inward and applied one of these styles, you found yourself in one of these styles? Anyone is brave enough to share? I shared with you my funeral, I can share with you lots of stuff, lots of experiences and stories about being inward. How many have been on a plane, on an airplane? Okay? And you're sitting in your seat and you see that person that's coming down the aisle, right? And you see them, you know, struggling with like two, three bags and, and you have the sense, you have this desire to actually get up and help them, right? But then you start thinking, well, I don't wanna just be the person that stands up and does that, I don't wanna be in the middle of the aisle. What if they don't like it, what if they actually react? I mean, I've stood up to help people put up their luggage and almost they bark at you, it's like, no, I got it, leave it alone. But that's a really simple, basic example of you have the sense, you have this desire to help someone. But who holds you back? You, because you also fit into, I mean, this person that you're trying to help may think, well, you know, I'm better than them, I'm stronger, I'm nimble. I can just take that brief, take that suitcase and put it up there in a second, while they're gonna struggle with it for five minutes. Right? So, yes. Please do. Yes. Mm-hmm.
You would get into these conversations with wonderful people who wanted to know everything about you. What they really wanted to know was how I was in first class next to them. Now that I'm old and I don't really care, I put my earbuds on and I am inward. I don't care to talk with you, I don't care to justify why I'm here, I don't care to justify where I'm going. And by the way, I don't wanna hear your whole life story. And I would actually prefer not to give you mine. So what I think I'm saying is that sometimes there is a strategic need. It's called survival, to be inward for just that small period of time. But we hope and pray that your cultural intelligence and your emotional intelligence will allow you to step out of that and then become that outward person when it's appropriate and when you can function like that. We cannot function always as an outward person, we cannot always function as an inward person. And we can't judge it for everybody else. So the emotional intelligence part of this, I didn't mean to do this, but I'm gonna do it. The emotional intelligence part of this steps in and helps you and guides you when you wanna be in the box and when you don't wanna be in the box. So it really is up to you unless you hurt somebody else. Then it's a whole nother ballgame.
Thank you so much, Nancy. So, and I wanna come back to something that you said, but at the end, it's that impact piece. It's the impact. So when we, we choose to be inward, we choose to be outward, sometimes people are wired a certain way. Sometimes people are comfortable being inward, some people are really out there and they're inward, outward, and they love everybody. So like I said, this is really a very, very truncated presentation. So when we talk about inward and outward styles, there are parameters, there are, you know, there are categorizations to it. Sometimes you can be hard, sometimes you can be soft, it doesn't mean you're inward. So I can be hard on someone or something, it doesn't mean I am inward. Because I still see them as a person, I still have expectations, I still have a desire to accomplish the mission. So you're absolutely right, being on an airplane, I say good morning to you, you say good morning to me, I put my headphones on and you put yours on. And, and that's it, there's, we've acknowledged each other. We don't have to be best friends, we don't have to become relatives on this five hour flight, but we're not being rude. We're not, you know, being disrespectful of each other. So it's a mindset, that's really one I, one I come back to, it is just a mindset. And what Nancy said that was really important is, I call it catch yourself. Are you able to catch yourself and recognize when you're being inward and outward? Are you able to recognize that you're about to hurt someone? Are you able to recognize that your actions, your way, your words, your behavior, sometimes your demeanor is causing someone some impact? And most importantly, are you willing to do something about it? I think that's really the case. Linda?
I was, I, I was watching the time and wonderful, wonderful.
Okay, and
One quick thing I just wanted to share about this because we're all representing our students and I've heard this feedback from our students a lot, is what you're describing as like inward action and outward action is that of neurotypical people. Cause a lot of what you're describing is like, if I only look here, I only do this, then everything else is perceived as rude. And that is cultural and it's also neuro, neurotypical for our culture. And I think that's huge because so many of our students, especially our students of color, have been kicked out of classes, have been treated one way or another because they're not conforming to what is seen as respectful or polite. And so I just think we need to also take this with what is standard white culture, neurotypical behavior as opposed to all the other gray that lies within human existence.
I appreciate you saying this. There's a lot of complexity to this and you can, I may, Steve, thank you very much. And you may extrapolate this any way you want, but the point that I wanna underscore to you is just recognize that the people, the person that's sitting next to you on the plane is just uncomfortable talking. The people that's sitting next to you on the plane had a long day. The people that's sitting to you on the plane may just not be interested in what you're interested in. So I can turn inward towards them just because Nancy put her headphones on, but I choose not to. I choose to say, I don't know what, what's, what kind of a day she's having. So I wanna stop here and just kinda remind you what would cause you to turn outward towards someone? And how do you go about that? And what actions you might take to turn outward towards someone? But I wanna get to, so this is just a backdrop for the conversation that we're about to have, are we okay on time? Okay? May I borrow a pen, please? Okay. Yes.
Being outward, in an elevator. You can't, my daughter told me I can't talk to anybody in the elevator, you're not supposed to talk, and I talk. Standing in line at the post office, there's this long line and it's just silent. And I spoke up, I said, does anybody talk here? Found out that the person ahead of me was, lived at Pistorva years ago and I knew his family and whatever, and I never would have known that. Standing in line in Jerusalem, I said, you know, if you're standing in line in Jerusalem, wouldn't you wanna know who's around you? You know, from different places.
Yep.
And turning outward, I mean, everybody, they're just standing there, you know, afraid, I guess, talk. And, and so I make a comment and then start an interesting conversation with a whole lot of people.
Yep. Absolutely, and I'm really comfortable doing that, sometimes I'm the quiet one and I want somebody to invite me into a conversation. Absolutely. And I'm really comfortable doing that. Sometimes I'm the quiet one and I want somebody to invite me into a conversation. And sometimes I'm like Nancy, just, I don't want to talk. Now, so we are going to have a healing conversation. We are going to open it up for anyone that wants to share something, but I would like to give you some ground rules. And they're really simple and I believe we're all adults and professional and caring human beings and we can adhere to them very easily. I would like you to state your interest. So when you speak, what is the, what is the issue or the interest that you have? I would like you to also state your objective, your desire. I would like to request that we not name people as we speak to issues that we've been affected by. I would like you to focus on the issue. Perhaps the incident, but without directing blame or pointing to people. Because if we're going to work through this and be able to resolve it, we really need to keep it at a, at a, you know, really civil level, if you will. And when we start to identify people, it becomes personal. And when things become personal, they become really difficult to resolve, at least not in an hour or so. Takes a lot longer. I do a lot of mediation and trust me, it takes a lot longer when things become personal and they become really difficult to resolve. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that the harm, the injury, the effect is personal. It is personal. But what we want to get to is an understanding of what it is, how it affected me and an acknowledgement that it's not right and a commitment that we're not going to do it. Do you want me to write this down or? Okay, Linda?
Said it perfect, at least the great note. So I will start. The reason I asked is, no name, just say how you felt. Just like he said, I felt hurted. I felt traumatized every time I heard the word white supremacist. Or white tears. I felt those are hate words and it traumatized me. I have racism, PTSD. I grew up in Louisiana where racism and the Ku Klux Klan would come down through my town. So I have a zero tolerance for racism. I don't care what the racist, I don't care who it is, whether it's black, white, Latino. I can't stand around and see white people's treated with racism. I can't stand around and see Latinos. I can't stand around and see blacks. I can't stand around and see Asians. I cannot stand and see a human being treated as if they're racist, being called racism. It's hate speech to me. And we are to care and love one another. And we're all connected in this. And so it traumatizes me every time I hear that. I don't like the race card and I don't like the race card being used for racism. I don't like to pull out the race card in favor of me, in my benefit, or if I think I'm going to gain something with it. It's not okay. And so I have struggled and struggled every time I hear, it re-triggered each time. And I felt like, and I felt like we come to a resolution, are we move forward? Are we going to move forward? It somehow would come back up again. And I, I don't, I can't continue on in these board of directors in hearing those terms. And I understand, believe me, I understand when people say freedom of speech. But we are in a political office. We could say whatever we want, but there is accountability. There is accountability. Whether we accountable to our students, our board, rest of our members, there is accountability. So I just want us to be respectful of each other. And when there's something wrong, go to the person, talk to the person. And ask the person, share it with how you felt harm or whatever. And be honest and transparent. Integrity goes a long way than dishonesty.
Thank you, Linda, for being honest and vulnerable. So what I'm going to do in my role is keep us on the topic until we've exhausted the topic and then we'll move on to another topic. All right. So Linda shared something that is, that is very real, very personal, something that has a deep impact on her. And it's something that she has lived with for a long time. So knowing that our words have the potential to impact someone in that way would cause us to, to think about how we say things. And I think most importantly, the purpose of saying things. Because sometimes we say things to express an interest, to express an opinion, but again, take you back to impact. There's an impact with everything that we do. Staying on this topic, comments, anybody else that'd like to express an interest? Sorry, you have one there?
I have an interest in being able to be heard as somebody who is not a part of a underrepresented group, besides the fact that I'm a woman. But I often feel as though because I'm not, I somehow have less of a voice in advocating for students. And sometimes I feel like I don't get to have a voice. And I am interested in being able to feel as though I can talk and advocate and not be disregarded.
Thank you, Chrissy. Okay, you have a mic, I think, at your table, right? I'm bringing this mic. Do you have a mic over here? Or there's one there? No, no, that's okay. That's great. That's great. I don't need to be a two-fisted mic here.
This one's tough for me.
Jeff, if I may, just, I just want to acknowledge what you said and I think it is very pertinent because it's about making assumptions and acknowledging and, and affording importance to who's saying what, where we lose sight of what's being said. And I think for a board, you all have common objectives. And I think the more people say that, the better. So, Jeff, excuse me, forgive me.
This one was tough for me. And I guess my interest is, I gotta be honest, I don't know how long I can keep on attending these meetings and be a target every single meeting. I didn't even attend the meeting last time in March. I, and we talk about being outward focused. I'm in a firefighter. I'm an EMT, advanced EMT. I'm a teacher on a special assignment. I'm the education board chair for the Salem Kaiser NWACP. I am on this committee in my own board. I've dedicated my whole life to help other people. I'm an ordained chaplain. I've been there when people in my community, I've done CPR on my student's dad for 46 minutes. I've declared people dead on scene and noticed that their brains were on my shirt. I have dedicated my whole life to try to help people and be outward focused and, and that's been a part that's really been important to me. But I don't even attend a meeting in March and then I found that the OSB leadership allows to read a statement where once again, comments about me and my family are present. I intentionally, I mean, I was taking a firefighting class. And again, I had to pay my own money to do that class because I'm a volunteer firefighter, outward focused. And I was very clear why I wasn't here and it still happened. And so my interest is honestly, as I point, is like, how much longer can I take? My also objective desire is, I had to admit too, like I'm very transparent. That's one of the reasons why I've been an excellent teacher and authentic to my students and, and the words and accolades I've received. And I try to be real and help people. And I have to also say too, I come from a place, the reason why I teach trauma classes for the Oregon Education Association is I have very severe trauma. When we're talking about our area, I'm the person that's the worst then. I have a terrible, terrible imposter syndrome. I always see myself as the worst person in the room. And I had to learn at a very young age how to disassociate when my father choked me. And I remember telling, as a teacher, telling my teachers that what was happening to me. And they said, I know your parents are both teachers and you need to stop lying. And that's when I realized I had to do this on my own. I'm an only child. And I said, you know, I'm going to take my horrible experience that I had and now I'm going to teach teachers all across Oregon how to help kids like me because my perfectionism was a manifestation of my trauma. When I get to this point and we talk about how it's impacted me on three different manifestations, I've talked to Emily, I've talked to Chris. I've talked to Chris in the Meadow of Death Valley, as well as Salam, I think in four different national parks. I lost track with Emily as well. It got to the point where my wife started pulling her hair out. And then on April 1st, I was in the middle of putting on a conference of a thousand high school kids for HOSA in Portland. And at 3:00 AM, on the first day of the conference, I get a phone call. And my daughter's biological mother was murdered. And I had 48 hours to get to Ethiopia with my daughter so she could be there for the funeral. And as I was by my hotel room by myself crying, I thought about a person attacking me and calling me white tears. And as I was at my daughter's mother's funeral, kept on thinking, am I doing this because it's tokens of my wild guilt? You don't have that posted online, but it's still posted online about me. And I have to live this and I have to actually too, some of you say, Jeff, keep on being the better person. I have to actually tell the Salem Kaiser NWACP not to get involved because they hate seeing that one of their board members trash and his reputation tarnished. I want to quit. And I have people telling me, don't quit. I mean, Salam keeps on telling me not to quit. But honestly, I, I get to this point where when I say my objective desire, why am I on a board that doesn't care about kids? And we're going to attack people who are lifelong advocates for educating, helping students, all students? I don't understand it. And this is not why I came back. I came back because this was one of the most functional boards I've ever been on and we focus on kids and that's why I wanted to be back in the seat. And we don't talk about kids. We're not focused on, and here's my biggest concern. And it goes back to what Linda said, when we say those terms that traumatize Linda, for many of us that are white in this room, it doesn't impact us. But I can tell you as a person who personally advocates for kids in Salem Kaiser School District and tells their parents on how to report bias incidents, when we start shooting off rhetoric, it's our kids of color who are impacted. And we get to go back home in our white houses. But when we start using rhetoric and we start confronting people and we start getting in people's faces and saying these things, there's a natural pendulum and most of you who say these things are not the ones that are going to suffer. It's our kids. So I'm just going to ask too, can we just be cautious of what we say and the words we say? Because when we start using rhetoric, our kids in this state are collateral damage and they're the ones that are suffering. And I can tell you because I'm one of the ones that's helping advocate in front of this community.
Thank you, Jeff. I think we're all touching on, on the same, the same kind of topic, if you will, the same nerve. I mean, we all want to be seen. We all want to be valued. We all want to be appreciated. We all want to bring value in the actions that we take and the words that we use. But I think sometimes these words kind of don't land the right way. And, you know, we're human beings and we, sometimes we can't fully discern how they're going to land, how they're going to be impacted. But I think they do have an impact. Words do have an impact. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that. It's really important to accept that words have hurt people. Making assumptions has hurt people. So, anybody else that has an interest that they would like to express? Thank you, Jeff.
I, I wanted this meeting to heal the organization. That was my goal. And when we, when, when I found out that we had a, a letter posted on social media that, and it, and it, to me, it damaged our organization because somebody not, not having any idea, anything, and they wrote, read that post about OSBA about, and, and they're going to go, and I, and my first thought was they're going to think that we're supposed to be about kids. And, and, and we have the, the language that, that was used and, and, and posted in public. And, and that we have an organization in Southern Oregon that wants to be OSBA. And that one, and the past president now is a legislator and saying, we're going to have Ephraim go to, to the legislature and this person actually emailed us about how to, about our, our, our bylaws and what we should do and not do. She's telling us and somebody else from that organization. And, and I'm saying, okay, now we have a legislative impact, a real, that could be, that could be real in our, in our, in our role as a board of directors. An organization is for kids and we've left kids behind. And, and, and so I, I want, I don't want Jeff quitting and I, and I just desperately want us, I want Linda to be happy, to come here and feel good. I want everyone to come and feel good. And I want us to present ourselves as a, a group of people that represent our communities and, and become whole again. And, and that's, to me, that's why we needed to have this conversation. I believe that we need this conversation.
Yeah. And I thank you for that. And I think many would concur. If I were to take you back to the session we had in January, we talked about some of the board commitments. And the first one that I talked about, and it's the one that I carry with me all the time, is duty of care. So what you just expressed is a duty of care for the organization, for the board, for the culture that you wish to have. If I were to ask you, just kind of popcorn it, if you will, why are you on the OSBA board? I mean, you have to travel six hours to get here, right? I know the pay's fabulous, but, you know, and I think they should double it for you, right? That's my old, well, that's what I thought, you know, you deserve it. So, but why are, why are you here? I mean, why are you here? Anybody cares to just, just a couple of words and two words? So you're here for the kids and you want to make sure every kid deserves the best. So you believe the best could come out of here, right? Okay, what else? What about others? Why are you here? So leadership matters and representation of leadership matters. Okay? To build connections? Okay? Okay, so to build connections with other people that may have a board similar to yours, but maybe different so you can share ideas, learn new things. Okay, what else? Thank you. Well, what I, what I heard you say is it's and I don't want, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I believe it's really a privilege to be on this board. It's a privilege to be on a statewide board. And it's a privilege to be a board that really is an example and that sets an example for the rest of the ninety-seven, hundred ninety-seven boards in the state of Oregon. And you set an example in terms of making every kid count. An example of having connections with people on the board, an example of learning from what others are doing. But you can also set an example by how you treat each other, really, and how you work through these difficult issues and challenges here. So it matters for you to be on this board and you want to make an impact. Is it fair to say you want to make an impact? You want to make a difference? I mean, you're learning, but you're learning so you can also have an impact locally. Right? So what is it going to take to get there? I mean, we've identified some real sincere heartfelt issues in terms of how Linda was impacted. How Jeff has impacted, how Chrissy is impacted and felt perceived. So how do we get to this place that you all have described? Of right, the right representation, making every kid count, making every corner of the state relevant to everything that you do here. How do we get there? And why is it important to get there? Yes, Emily?
I think just recognizing that we are not a homogenous group and like that's where some of our power comes from. Is there's people on this board that feel the same as me. There's people that feel very different from me. But if we're able to work together and share ideas and collaborate, that's where we're going to make a difference. It's not from trying to get people in my camp or get people in your camp. It's, you know, collaborating and, and using our voice that way.
Okay? So every, anyone disagree with that? And why is it important to be that? Why is it important to recognize that we are different people? We represent different constituencies. May, we may belong to different ideologies, beliefs, values, communities, constituencies. But when you're here, you are the OSBA board, the collective voice for every kid in the state of Oregon. Why is that important? Has any of you been traveling around the state and people would say to you, what's, what's going on with OSBA? I heard that in Grants Pass last week. I was in Grants Pass last week. And the stranger in this meeting of a hundred, it was a community conversation, a hundred people. She said, you're from, you're from Salem, right? I said, yeah. She said, what's going on with OSBA? I said, no, no. Had to pretend. Who had his hand up? Yes, sir. I think there is a mic at your table.
I think our differences are really the value that we all bring is that I don't know what it's like to be a black woman flying in first class. Hell, I don't know what it's like to fly in first class. So. But you know, though, that's really where the power of this organization comes from is there are so many different perspectives and there's not a person in this room that is not passionate about, about kids and what they're doing. It's just we have to move past whatever hurt occurred. And, and refocus on, on what our mission is and, and infighting is, is not our mission.
Yes, sir.
Well, I hope this doesn't come across as being too pessimistic, but I think some of us want outward outcomes and results. But we're so used to doing it inward tech tactics and methods. Because that's how our cultural trauma has socialized us to be, to be champions and advocates. We have to unfortunately have to play dirty. Not all the time, but sometimes that perception is as if we want actions to, we want results. We have to play by the rules of how those rules were played onto us.
And I appreciate that. And there's such great truth in what you're saying, in what you're saying. But how do we get people to understand that without fighting with our friends? I mean, the people in the room are your friends. The people in the room want to accomplish the same thing. You want to make sure every kid is successful. Right? But I think we're sometimes in an inward style, justifiable inward style. Historically accurate inward style for a reason because as Nancy, right? Yes. So it was survival. Sometimes it's survival. You're inward because it's survival. Sometimes I, I mean, I, I come from minority background as well, and I project that. And it's survival. And I, but I know it's survival now. I know. And I catch myself. And I step back. And it's a challenge and it's, it's really, it's a very tough position to be in. But how do we create awareness, build understanding and create, you know, friends and colleagues and a coalition that can actually help us accomplish that? Because I believe everybody wants to accomplish that while acknowledging those, that background, the history, the incidents, the circumstances. Linda, you had your hand up. There's a mic at your table.
I couldn't even remember what I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I, I can't.
Okay. We'll come back to you. Yeah, I'm sorry. And then, uh, Katrina. Okay, you're first, please.
Yeah, I would, um, I, you just touched on it too. I think in a structure, an organization like this, building relationships is very difficult. So there's a, a piece, I think as a board, we could talk about like the creativity of how we do that outside of the meetings, what that could look like that gives us a chance to strengthen those where we can. Um, I realized today when I came in that I, I remembered a few people, but I wasn't quite sure. And it makes me think, you know, maybe it's me emailing Greg just once a month and, hey, what's going on, right? And I connected with Tristan because that's someone I felt like I is close to me and we've met a couple of times with our group. And so there's a responsibility within the organization itself to talk about what are other ways that we do that. I also think it's worth considering, and I'm just outside newcomer coming in, that there's definitely some personal individual dynamics that maybe aren't going to be addressed necessarily in this group meeting, but might warrant certain people to make that, make that, um, effort outside of the group for the benefit of the group where, you know, find a time to do the coffee or even if it's uncomfortable. So there might be some individual work that needs to be completed outside of the organization. That's a responsibility. So those would be the two things I think as a, as an organization we could talk about.
Yep.
And where we might go after today. And then everybody in this room seems open, like if someone in this room someone had an issue with me, you know, I, you know, we maybe have an agreement where people, what does that look like in between meetings and how do you connect so that you can talk through and, and make everything stronger. But it's difficult to build those relationships when you only meet a certain time, but I think it can. Yeah.
Absolutely. You have to have the desire, the commitment. And, uh, I would say the space sometimes for those things to happen. Thank you. I, I totally agree. The part of the training that I do actually gets at that. It gets, is what we do is the first day people start to think, okay, you know, my coworkers are the problem. My boss is the problem. By the end of the first day, you realize you're the problem. Then on the second day, we actually go through a process where you almost make amends. And then we take a break and we ask people to call somebody that they're in collusion with or in conflict with. And those have been really just sometimes cathartic conversations where you call someone and say, hey, I've been, I've been in your way for six months. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Because you just realize all of a sudden. But it takes effort to build relationships and that's really the key, the relationships part. Okay, Katrina.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Um, I really appreciate what Chrissy was saying. Um, I also feel like I looked around the room when we were asking the question of the why. And every head was nodding when it was about our students. That's why we're here or the collective leadership, you know, reminding ourselves that we are for school board members. And therefore for students. And so it's a two-part support system that we're building here. Um, and one of the things that I think is so relevant about that is, I think, taking the yes and of a lot of what I'm hearing, which is some of the things are deeply personal and some of the things are deeply systemic and recognizing that two things can be true. Um, because for example, what I hear from a lot of my students is how systemic racism directly affects them. And what I hear from my students is how sexism directly affects them or transphobia directly affects them. And, you know, like our students worked really hard to advocate for, for example, for public health. Declaring racism a public health issue. And our students fought hard for that. And that's our students from around the state. And so I think, for example, sometimes we're asking our students to grow and to learn and to be uncomfortable in that growth. And I think we as a collective organization, um, need, and individuals also need to decide if we're uncomfortable in our personal space or uncomfortable as our leadership role in the, in the direction we're taking in education. Because I hear from a lot of our students that they want to be having specific words used and they want to be hearing that their trauma matters. And so I think how we lead for our students versus ourselves is deeply important.
Right. And, and I appreciate that. And we have to listen to the voices of students. But why can't I be uncomfortable and be respected? Why can't I be uncomfortable and be valued? Why can't I be uncomfortable and still recognize that what you're saying or what he's saying or what she's saying is affecting me personally? So I don't think we can, I don't think it, we can't really have it one way or the other. And I love our students, but you guys are the adults in the room. The students are not here. So how are you going to treat each other? I love it when we bring, I mean, sometimes I mean, I love students and I love student voice and I want to inject it into everything. But sometimes that's an escape. No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not attacking you. Please understand. Yeah. Yes. And I agree with you. And I think that needs to happen in the education system. It needs to happen in classrooms. It needs to happen in districts. It needs to happen in school buildings. But when we're here. I know now certain words that I say, even though they're correct. They're part of our mission. They're part of our objectives are going to hurt Linda. If I know that, what should I do? Should I not say them? Or should I think before I say them? And please understand, I'm not picking on you or dismissing. I respect everything that you said and I agree with it. But what I'm trying to get us to understand is you're the adults. You are, you are the people in the room. Yes, you represent the students. But when you come here to represent the students, you want to feel like you belong, just like your students want to belong. You want to feel valued. You want to feel respected. You want to be able to develop constructive and meaningful relationships. You want to know that the work you're doing is, um, leading to every student being served. I'm going to stop talking. So it's your turn.
Uh, getting back to what you're, leading up to what you're saying, we had training last August at the summer conference and Vincent I think it's Vincent Adams was teaching a class. And, um, one of our chairs from Lane. One Lane School District was in there and issues happened, come up. We had several issues in 4J. And, um, that very thing that you're saying came up, well, we're here, we're here as adults. But what she was doing when it came up in the training, um, being a chair and getting all these text messages and everything, do not use the students as an scapegoat. There is accountability for what you're doing. You can't be doing that in a board meetings and violating communications, uh, laws of public meetings. And then using the students as a scapegoat because when you're caught and you're in in trouble and then you delete everything from your phone because you violated the public meetings. Uh, you want to use the student as a scapegoat. Well, what, what if the student, what if it was, and it wasn't a student. But anyways, we cannot use the student. That's what came up in training. We cannot.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the students are part of what we do, but we have to remember we're the adults. Um, and when the students sit on a board, by the way, we expect the students to act like the adults too. And to adhere to the same rules. Guadalupe?
I, I think adult behavior calls for accepting that there is going to be differences and that when we are speaking truth, that it is going to be painful. If I take offense to somebody saying, I don't want to hear words like white supremacy, and I do take offense to that. Then who, whose values, whose feelings are going to become more important in this room? That's, that's a point that I wanted to make.
Yeah.
Salam.
Yeah.
I also want to say that the invalidation that you just did of what Katrina said with saying, yes, but is, is just not conducive to the, the kind of healing that I heard was supposed to happen at the beginning of this meeting.
Yes, yes.
I don't think that, quite frankly, what I have heard thus far is not a healing sentiment. It is a very blameful sentiment and a sentiment that speaks to not wanting to accept the discomfort that is necessary with difference. I have a significant amount of difference, even with Katrina. And you know what? I have to learn that that difference is going to make me uncomfortable. And I have to be a grown up about dealing with it in my own time, in my own way.
Yep, yep. And I appreciate that. First of all, I apologize if I offended you in any way. But if we're going to be adults and have an adult conversation, you should accept me pushing back. I shouldn't have because I'm the facilitator of the conversation. But I also think we have to have, I appreciate what you said. Let's no, no, but let me explain. I, I wasn't trying to really take sides. I just used it as an opportunity to advance the conversation. And to really bring a different perspective to the conversation. So, but you're right, as the facilitator, I shouldn't do that. And I know better. But I respect you and I knew you could handle it. So I wanted to use it as an opportunity to redirect the conversation a little bit. Because we are, um, I don't think we're blaming personally. I think people are saying, this, I'm going to be really blunt with you. I think people are saying, I've been hurt. And I think they're waiting for that to be acknowledged. And I don't think that's been acknowledged. It doesn't have to be acknowledged by the people that have done the hurting. It can be acknowledged by the room in general. That we've created an environment where people are getting harmed, feeling harmed. And I wanted to move us to that next step then, which is, so how do we reconcile this? How do we resolve it? And how do we move to that next step? Of you know, how are we going to treat each other? So I mean, I agree, some of the language that some of us use is gonna be off-putting to others. But if I want them to listen to me and appreciate what I'm saying. I can't just expect them to change the way they hear the language and the message. I have to moderate my behavior. I have to adjust my behavior. Right? So, I'm just trying to move us to the next stage of, let's, okay, so what's the solution? What's the solution? Obviously, some things were said that were harmful to people. They were perceived as harmful. We heard that they felt that they are harmful. You have a mic at your table, Linda.
I, I don't want to feel like anybody is blaming. And I'm looking at you, but I, I don't, I'm, I'm talking to you basically. I don't want to feel like anybody is blaming anybody in that we are grown-ups in here and that we do all come from different walks of life. And I meant what I said, when I said, I feel like white tears is, is traumatizing to me. That's racist hate as well as white supremacy. Certain, certain frames and situation where white supremacists are used, it won't bother me. But in that setting, and when we're all adults here, I, I, I understand maybe a little bit, but that, this is not where I'm saying, I don't want to hear it at all. I'm just saying, I, I was traumatized.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, Linda, and I similarly was traumatized.
I know, I know. Don't say Linda because I didn't say Guadalupe.
Oh. Apologies.
It's okay.
All right.
We have our agreement.
Yes, yes. You, you are absolutely correct and I apologize for that. And so we, you were speaking to me, so I felt like.
Yes, but I didn't want to call your name.
Yes, I, I thank you so much for, for that, calling that out. Similarly, there, there have been situations, just even now, where the, I, I, if I asked, if I asked everyone in the room honestly to tell me, who has had the center voice in these meetings for the last nine months? So at least since I've been present in the meetings, Linda?
That's okay.
That's okay, that's okay.
It's a habit.
You can say it, you can say it. Go ahead.
Who, who has had the centered voice in these meetings is what I want to say. And then to hear some of my peers in this room as adults saying that they feel uncomfortable when they speak up or when they, that they don't feel heard because of their position, that makes me feel really invalidated, really unheard. Not only that, but I also want to point out some of the obvious situations in the room. The individual who feels like they are most grieved in this situation is the person that continues to bring up their family, all of their woes, their personal woes, their, their personal issues. I appreciate that. I appreciate and understand people because of who they are. I want that, I want that same respect. And if I say something, then I need to be responsible for the things that I say. Nobody called out anybody's family except the one individual that keeps bringing their family up at every meeting that I've been at. So if you don't want your family to be called out, then don't bring your family to the table or those issues. That's really harmful to me. It really is. I'm not going to ask this individual to stop talking because I respect everybody's right to be able to be heard. Just like you want me to listen to you, I'm listening, I'm listening. And I want to be heard as well. I want to be heard as well. And being told repeatedly, having to listen, sit in some of these meetings and listen to the same story over and over at these meetings, and that I grieved somebody, that I, actually, some of the language that was used was much harder when none of those things were accurate. And I've had to listen to that language over and over again. And I, in my best intention, as the leader that I am in this state, sit quiet and accept it because I don't want to take time out of what needs to be a very constructive meeting that centers students, that centers school boards. That is not what has happened. We have spent the last hour trying to, trying to go through a process that is not going to heal this group of people. Because we have elementary differences, differences in our value systems that are going to make me not be in agreement with other individuals. That doesn't mean that I hate every individual in the room. I, I, I hope that we can really be adults without, without violating other people, without constantly wanting to assume the center.
So Guadalupe, you touched on something, and I think we talked about it last time. Recall, I said there are three sources of conflict. Process conflict, relationship conflict, and values conflict. And maybe that's part of the healing process here, is that you recognize that you have different values, you have different relationships in the room, and you have to find a process that's going to work for everybody, that honors everyone. And I think it's important to find a process where people at least don't feel harmed or injured. I think the impact piece is really important. I think we have to figure out how the impact is, the intention at least is outward, but recognizing that it's going to be personal for some people. And, you know, we can go through a process of identifying some agreements. I mean, that's essentially, that's part of healing, is we need to have some agreements because, I mean, I'm going to come back, if I may triangulate this interaction between the three of us. And again, it's a teachable moment, so forgive me, I'm not picking on you. I'm not picking on you. But I could interpret it, what Guadalupe said to me is, you know, when she called me out, part of me wanted to say, well, what gives you the right to call me out? Why are you better than me? Right? Why, why, why are your rules are the ones I have to live by? I'm comfortable engaged, I'm a very direct person. You can handle it, I've talked to you before, you're a tough lady. I, so I made this, I made the assumption that I'm going to be able to have an adult conversation with Katrina and she's going to handle it. Why is that wrong? Why do I have to comply by your rules? What I'm trying to say is, I respect your values, I disagree with them, I respect them, I will honor them, I will, I immediately apologize because I realized that was important to you and it was important to me. I don't know if I was wrong or not, but it was important to me to say, I'm sorry. If I hurt you, I sincerely and wholeheartedly, I'm sorry.
Do you feel like you were hurt? This is a safe space. We want to talk. And I also have one for you. But you said, you don't think this is going to help us, this is going to heal us, this isn't going to help us move forward. And that's what we're trying to do. But if, let's start with you first.
I, I don't know if my gut reaction was hurt so much as a slight bit of surprise. And I think that mostly comes from historically always being the youngest in the room, usually only being the queer, only queer person in the room, and always being questioned, like every time I am the one whose statement or whatever is questioned. And so I think I was more shocked than hurt, not shocked, just slightly taken aback because if you notice, not a single other person received feedback on their statement. And that could have been situational, that could have just been because it was a good moment. And so I didn't assume ill intent, but I caught myself being like, it feels odd that no one else received feedback. And it could be situational because it felt like a good time to make a comment, or it could have been because we're pretty used to asking people that look like me to justify why they think the way they think.
Yeah. So what I would say is, none of that stuff occurred to me. The only thing that occurred to me is like, oh my gosh, I just picked on her and I shouldn't have, but it was oddly situat, I, you have to forgive me, I'm also, I, I teach classes and I feel like I'm in a senior seminar here, I'm in my elements. So you just gave me an opportunity. It was really, really situational. Because one of the, my other part of the presentation is to talk about the feedback you all provided relative to what you would like to do moving forward. And much of it was about building relationships. But there were several comments about, you know, we, we need to consider students, but when we're here, we're a board, we're a statewide board, we're a policy-making board. We set example for the rest of the boards. So that's why when you said the students and then the other piece, it just gave me an, an opportunity. So, but I, again, I apologize, it was not my intention to do that. And it's not my intention to pick on you, but I, but it's a real-life example. I had this reaction, it's like, well, those are your rules? You interpret, you interpreted my action this way, but then I had to check myself. I wasn't going to turn inward towards you, I was going to say, okay, I'm going to listen. My actions had an impact and somebody had the courage to point it out. And it reminded me that as a facilitator, I turned into my professor mode, as a facilitator, I don't do that. But I'm also honestly trying to move you to that next step, building on what you said is, how do we move from blame to resolution and to agreements? Because you're not going to be able to all think the same way, nor should you. You're not all going to be able to believe the same way, nor should you. You have to be true to yourself, you have to be true to the board and the community that you represent, but you have to have some agreements on how you're going to move forward. And those agreements become your protocols and you have some, you have board agreements. So that would be a really good place to start. What's missing on those board agreements? Maybe there needs to be some language relative to best intent. We have to believe in the best intent. And I also think it's important to be able to ask a clarifying question. Katrina, what did you mean by that? Or to actually say, Katrina, you know, I was affected by your comment in this fashion. Can you, you know, I just want to share that with you. And it doesn't mean we're condemning you or we're saying you're totally wrong, it's just, we have those relationships that allow us to say that. So I think that's part of the healing process, is moving to that next step of, so what are we going to do about this and what are we going to do together? And what agreements, besides your operating agreements or board agreements, you need to have to, you know, identify things that may have an impact on someone or prevent those things from having an impact, period. Nancy? Oh, I thought she was.
She was going to tell us how, hey. She has said that she doesn't think this was going to help us move forward. Like she said, you don't think this was going to happen.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not suggesting that it's not going to help us. What I'm suggesting is that the healing that you are searching for, that perhaps other individuals in the room are searching for, is not, I don't feel that that is really a genuine intent. I feel like what has been said already and presented has been said repeatedly. And if there really was a healing intent, I will come to the table with a clean slate and say, you know, what I said previously was, was really wrong in how you, how I might have said it to you, the impact that it caused on you, but that's not what I, what I am feeling. That is not how I've sensed what individuals in this room have said today, have brought to the table today. I don't expect that to be the case. Personally, I don't, I don't feel like I have to be 100% your best friend. Listen, I have great conversations every time that we come to one of the meet, to the meetings with people who I know have 180-degree perspectives on very important things to me. That does not mean that I can't be respectful toward them. And if I'm being told in this room that the things that are universal, universally acknowledged, universal knowledge, like the fact that we live in a society that continues to be racist, that continues to oppress and harm people who look like me and you, several other people, I'm not pointing at one person in particular. When I'm being told that that is harmful to acknowledge in this room, that doesn't indicate that it's healing. I'm not personalizing the situation. I'm saying that this is the reality that we live in and if that we can't acknowledge it in this room, then what are we doing as leaders? How are we representing kids who really, really need to have somebody standing in front of them and, and, and speaking for them and defending them when they can't have a voice? So I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting to walk out of this room holding hands with everyone. I'm expecting that we can continue to conduct business in the positions, in the capacities that we are, with the common understanding that we are going to have differences. But when we fling insults and then expect not to hear that back or to have everybody acquiesce to those, those offenses that were said in, in a public forum, in a forum that is heard by the entire state. It's not a social media post that is only heard or read or listened to in, in this entire state. These meetings are public meetings. What I say in this room is important. It's how I'm representing myself to the entire state. It's not just about what's on social media or what's on, it's how I treat everybody when nobody's looking.
I'm one of the newer members and I'm glad, I'm glad that we are talking about this. I still haven't figured out what happened. That, so that, that, so let me, let me just say this, that is not a minimization of how anyone feels. What I am acknowledging is that everyone in here has red blood pumping through your veins and if you look at it in the right way, it appears green. I've seen it. Every one of us has at least two sets of lungs. Every one of us gets one heart. And that heart does not beat forever. I need to know that my time in this organization and those of other individuals who are coming to the table right now, I need to know that we can acknowledge that there has been hurt, harm, blame, and pain. Is there anyone who disagrees with me? Okay. Can we work together so that we can get back to the business? We are not minimizing how people have been felt, hurt, and pained. What we are acknowledging is that that has occurred. It is up to those individuals to have a conversation with somebody, somewhere in their life, to try to get past it, work through it, or do whatever has to be done. But this body has work to do. And I can't keep having this conversation if this is the one that we're going to have. I really want to do the right thing. We are not a monolith. You guys, I'm in Oregon, for God's sake. Come on, I, I knew where I was coming, I really, I really did, I promise you, I did the homework. I promise you, I did the homework. But I have to tell you, what I'm going to say right now is what I want you to remember. You guys, this land has been blessed by the presence of the Native American Indian. You all grow things that I have never seen grown altogether in my life. And I've been a lot of places. Y'all can grow llamas, alpacas, pumpkins, hops, grass, wheat, strawberries and blueberries, trees. Thank you, didn't know what a field bird was, now know it's a, no, no, no. Thank you, didn't know what a filbert was, now know it's a, no, 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 hazelnut.
And blackberries.
And blackberries. And of course, you all grow the famous Marionberry. And the moment I stepped in this state, I said, oh my God, did they not know he died? Once again, once again, I appreciate all of you. We are not a monolith. But we do have one job. I'm asking that we come together to do this job. And I want to do this. And I want everybody in here to want to be here. But I can't make that happen. So the choice is yours. But I need to know that we can do this moving on. Cause I cannot sit here until 11 o'clock and then try to drive home. I love you, but I can't.
So I'm going to build on that. Thank you so much, Nancy. So we've been sitting for a long time. I'm going to take a risk here and do something that I wasn't going to do, but I'm going to do it anyway. I violated one rule already, so what the heck? And it's past my bedtime, I get cranky after 10 o'clock. So we've been talking for a long time. I think people in the room, those that have been hurt indicated that they were hurt. People that may have hurt them or offended them may have realized that they've done it, wasn't their intention. But things happened. So I want to move us to closure. And then the reconciliation and the agreements moving forward. But I'm not going to come up with solutions for you. You need to come up with your own solutions because those become your agreements. So we've been sitting for the last, what, three hours? So I'd like you to get up. I'd like you to find somebody in the room that you don't know that well. And I would like you, if you're open to it, try to reach reconciliation with this person, if this person has offended you or hurt you in any way. But what I'm really interested is, in, is this. As you pair up in twos, find someone you don't know, somebody, or you choose your person. I'm not even going to give you any parameters, you choose your person. But I would like you to discuss what we're going to do as a body moving forward, so you can get to your work. So you're going to set your agreements right now. We're, and I'm just going to jot them down over there. So in pairs, and, you know, if you come up with an idea that somebody else has, great, we'll just put double stars next to it. So. No, no, I want you to just talk, discuss with someone. Discuss with someone what you need to do to move forward and to get to doing the work. Realizing that there is still pain, there's still hurt, there's still trauma. But you want to get to doing your work. We've had the conversation. So find somebody, pair up with somebody. And let's hear some suggestions in terms of what the group, what this body wants to do to move forward. Because I agree with Nancy, I think was, this is really great. I think it was important to have this conversation. But we need to bring some agreement, some, some closure and some agreement to it. And I would suggest that, I'm sorry, Christie, right? Christie, yes, yes, yep, yes, Christie. I would suggest, you know, building on what you said relative to building relationships. You know, we build relationships with people, we, we strengthen the relationships with the people that we know. And we build relationships with people that we don't know. So I think that's an important part of this conversation moving forward. So please get up, I'm going to give you till 20 after, that's seven minutes. I'm going to give you till 20 after, find somebody, have a conversation. Give me some ideas in terms of what brings this to closure and what do we do moving forward? Seven minutes. Yep. And Katrina, I apologize again, I honestly think it was a situational moment of, yes, yes, it's okay, situational moment, so thank you very much. You guys can participate, you can help each other.
I have a big name, I have a name.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm gonna, I need you to look this way, please, I need you to answer, I'll put my hands up. What happens when you put your hands up? Everybody in school, remember being in school? Okay, you can stay where you are. You don't have to go back to the table. So we're going to move to action here, we're gonna, I guess I better use the mic. So we're going to move to action. I asked you for suggestions to get to closure and agreements moving forward. That's how you resolve conflict. So, who would like to go first? I'm just gonna, I have to apologize in advance, my penmanship is horrible. Oh, I was, I was hoping somebody would say that. I'm so glad I stood next to you on the plane. And God ignore. Okay, you are awesome, thank you so much. I couldn't have gotten here without you, I want you to know that. Okay, so who would like to go first? And, and let's be really specific, as specific as you possibly can, okay? All right, please, I'm sorry, Emily, I didn't see you, go ahead. Mike, Mike, Mike?
We talked about recognizing that being on this board is a privilege, but it's also a sacrifice. You know, all of us are away from our people, this is probably not what we want to be doing on a Friday night, not what we, we want to be doing on a sunny Saturday. So how do we make the best use of everyone's time and be respectful in saying the things that need to be said, but not talking if it's something that's already been said or something that's not going to be helpful? And then we also talked about acknowledging, you know, if we could go back in time six months, there's probably something that every one of us would do differently, but we can't. And so just acknowledging like there might be things that I want to hear that I'm never going to hear, but that's just the way it is. So our choice is to either dwell on that or move forward and then get back, get back to the important work that we're doing. So focus on the work.
Okay, so focus on the work. Understand the purpose of the meeting. Understand that we're not going to get everything we want. And be efficient in the running of the meeting and what gets said, et cetera. Okay, thank you. Who would like to go next? Okay, so don't feel the urge to reply or comment on anything that gets said, even if it's bothering you, right? Is it, is it appropriate to say, if, if somebody says something that bothered you, that you would agree to at least be open to a conversation with that person? So if I, Steve, right? If I say something in the meeting, or if Steve says something in the meeting that I just take exception with, do I turn inward and just start to kind of, you know, attack you or question you or, you know, or do I say, okay, I'm going to talk to Steve after the meeting? And the commitment is you'd be willing to hear me out. You'd be willing to have a conversation. And I think if we come to the realization that Steve did something that's truly offensive to me, that maybe there's an opportunity to correct that in the room. Or I may say, you know, not a big deal, I just want you to understand, that's all. Just people talking to people, people talking to each other, okay? Yes, sir?
Two different things. One is that the perception that people have of you could be really far off based on what's going on that day. We, we talked about situations where certain things happened and people had a perception and they, how they acted toward you was really off because of their day, the way things they had. The other thing we talked about is, you have no idea where I came from or who I am or what my background is.
Yep.
You don't know what I've gone through in my lifetime. And to put onto me your perception of what I am based on what I look like is completely wrong.
Yep.
You need to find out. Talk with me, find out who I am, what I've gone through. And if it pertains to the subject of what you're talking about, then delve into it a little bit and say, you know, I, I was in that situation too.
Yep.
But not to put me in a box.
Right, right.
Because of any particular thing.
Yeah, so we have to check our perceptions. That's one thing, I, I heard you say two things, but I'm going to add a third. One is grace. Let's give grace to each other. Let's give grace to each other. And if we want to get grace, we have to, to give it. The second is, let's get curious about each other. The relationship piece that Christie talked about earlier. Let's work on our relationships inside the boardroom and outside the boardroom. And some relationships may never develop, but at least make a commitment to work on relationships. What's the term of service here? How long are you on the board? Two years. Wouldn't it be wonderful to get to know the people that you're spending so much time with? So work on the relationship. And the third is, you know, perceptions and understanding that there is more to me than what you see. And you have to also appreciate my background, where I come from, et cetera. Okay, others? Yes, ma'am?
Appreciate the wisdom.
Ah, love it, love it.
And the youth.
Right, somebody this table told me they have eighteen years. Even if you don't know, she has. I just might keep it real with you. You may not think of it as, she might be the one that keeps us from going down the pathway or doing something stupid that we've already done for years. So that she was scared about this. Because she did, I'm just saying. Respect the wisdom.
Yes.
I was thinking about it earlier and I mentioned it, our table group. There's approximately between a thousand and twelve hundred school board members across the state. We are a very select group of twenty-two, twenty-five board members. What an opportunity, what an honor that we get to be here at this statewide association. That's a lot of power that we have and a lot of opportunity that we have. And we're here for a reason, and it is for the kids, and it's also for our fellow school board members, so that they can do a better job in their communities. But twenty-five of us out of fifteen hundred, twelve hundred? That's a pretty special thing. And I'm reminded of that all the time, that everybody that's here made a commitment to be here because they wanted to make something better.
So I, I think we can capture some of that, is that just remember the importance of being here, the privilege of being here. I think sometimes that's how I check myself, it's like, I'm really lucky to be in this room. I'm really lucky to be with these people that come from all over the state. So appreciating the wisdom and the experience and the representation that's in the room and appreciating the value of being here and the importance of being here. Okay, others, let's keep adding to the list.
This may not be the resolution of what got us here today, but for all those who were part of this, of getting us here, acknowledge how we got here and take ownership.
Okay, so I think it's, it's the accountability piece, it's acknowledging what happened. Let's own it and let's move forward. Let's own it and let's move forward. And, and I don't wanna, um, put words in your mouth, but I think that's a reset. Could that be a tangible reset? Not gonna force anyone to do anything, but you're asking for something really specific. And do you believe that would be a reset? And a fresh start? So get closure on organization. Take down negative school media posts that affect the reputation of the board. So you see that as affecting the reputation of the board? And that's really what I was hoping that we would do tonight. For me, that's part of the, the healing, is the reset. And I'm not talking about this specifically, but just the reset that we commit to each other. We commit to this board. We commit to this association. Cause I can't think about the toll that this is taking on the staff, frankly. And I can't also underestimate the tool that it's taking on your reputation. I mean, it's your brand. It's your reputation. It's being impacted whether you realize it or not. So a reset is really necessary to say, we're gonna operate this way and we're gonna hold each other accountable to that and proceed together. We may not all agree, but we're gonna lock arms together and move forward together as a board. Okay, what else? Other suggestions? Yes, sir?
All right, I, I'm a military guy. So I refer back to my military career a lot. However, since I've been out of the military, I obviously got into politics. And watching C-SPAN, I remembered they have, they have a resolution, a document for key words that cannot be mentioned on the floor of the House or the Senate. And if you do that, you're in violation. You're, you're removed. It's probably the Sergeant of Arms. We don't have a Sergeant of Arms. So I would gladly volunteer the President or Vice President to do that for our meetings. Will you accept? This would be a, this would be a, a living document amongst the body, for the body of, say, trigger words that won't be used. Won't be used. Um, if they're used, the person that used them would probably be removed from the room, gather their composure, and then allowed to come back. The body feels like something was done about it. Therefore, the body can grow from that. And this is, like I said, a living document. It will grow with us as we progress, as the members change, as, as the body, um, continues through its process.
Can I ask you a question, please? Again, I'm stepping out of my role, but I want you to get to closure on this. So could somebody use the trigger terms? Just hypothetically speaking, somebody would, would preface that by saying, I am gonna use this term, but there is a reason why I'm using it. And I'm using it to express a point or to emphasize a particular point of view that may be absent from the conversation. But how they do it is equally important. So not just the term, the phrase, the word, but it's just how that sentiment is conveyed. Right? Because the way it's been used now perhaps led to people being injured or hurt or harmed. But I'm, but we also recognize the importance of certain words and concepts and principles. But maybe we just need to find another way of expressing that. Or prefacing it by saying, you know, I'm gonna use this analogy or I'm gonna use this phrase, but it's not my intention to offend anyone in the room. But the group can also monitor that too, to say, well, yeah, we were offended. You know? And they can leave or they can just rephrase. But I just think building the understanding that certain phrases, certain words, certain language has an impact. I'm not debating with you. I'm just asking a question, just a clarifying question. Would that, would that work too? Or is it, do you have to just remove these words from the conversation?
In order to answer that question, I'll refer to a short story. There was a troop. He insisted that his supervisor wrote him a great performance report. So he did. As the troop was standing at the desk, watching him type on the computer. And the troop thought it was the best performance report he's ever gotten his whole life. The supervisor then, after the troop left, emailed the person that it went to and said, read every fourth word. Every fourth word turned out to be the worst performance report that was ever written. That can be done here as well. You're, the way you perceive what you are saying can be taken many different ways. It's how you say it. It's when you say it. It's everything involved with what is said.
I have a suggestion. I was born in, what, twenty-nine palms? Uh, let's take that suggestion. Is it possible that maybe for the next short period of time, three to four months, that we have this list and the words are simply, the words and the phrases are simply prohibited? This will give us the time to heal. This will give us the time to get to know each other. This will give us the time to get work done. And then we can come back and look at it and see if there's a better way for us to deal with that.
Great suggestion. But it's not up to me. Yes, please. I think there is a mic at that table. There is one over here, too.
That's a new member who's spent a lot of time on this topic. I feel like figuring, the act alone of figuring out the words we can say and not say is going to take hours. And I am ready to get to the business of the OSBA. So I would recommend, instead of coming up with a list of words, we agree not to intentionally inflame conversations with words that we know are triggering. And they are still allowed, but we are more careful in how they're delivered.
Yeah. I love that. So agree to not inflame conversations with the choice of words, recognizing that they will. And I want to also capture your first point, which is, which I believe is a method of healing, is let's get to the work. Let's do the work that we all signed on for that allows us to accomplish our missions and serve our students and our communities. And it's what you said earlier, Nancy, in terms of, let's get to the work. Let's get to the business of the Oregon School Boards Association. Thank you. Okay, others? I can walk around and use the Socratic method if you guys...
Mine's brief. It's just accept non-closure because we are never going to agree on absolutely everything.
So accept non-closure? Okay, accept a measure of non-closure. All right, so here is your opportunity. We're inching closer to eleven o'clock and I know many of you have drives ahead of you. You have to get up early in the morning, right? Okay, so? Nothing else? I, I have long wait time. Emily?
I'm really quiet, but, um, I just have to say, think about your impact on staff and what happens in this room and how that translates to the team that has been working very, very, very hard through this time period to keep us on track. And I just, I just have to say it because it really hasn't come up at all. And you all are leaders of an organization and leaders of a team of people that have been here doing the work this whole time. And we just need, like, I just want to clap when you say, get focused back on the work because that is what we need to do to be able to serve the school board members across the state and serve our students. And we have to be able to do that or we're not, we're not doing what we're here for. And so just thinking about impact in that term as well, I think it's important.
Yes, be nice to the staff. All right, so we started a list. It is a measure of closure. It's not total closure. You may feel that, you know, you surfaced something, but it didn't really go as far as you would have liked it to do, to go. Thank you so much. Thank you, Nancy. And I think a lot of you want to get to the work. And I just want to ask those that spoke earlier about their experience, their feelings. I hope you have at least a sense of satisfaction that space was created for you to express your feelings, your interest, and for the rest of us to hear you. It doesn't mean you're totally healed. It doesn't mean this fixes everything. But I honestly believe this is a compliment to the entire board to spend this time just listening to each other, acknowledging sort of the experience and the hardship that you've gone through for the last six months and now making a commitment to move forward. And you can take these agreements and build on them. You can compare them to your working agreements. But I think the key here is that you've gotta live by them. And what I love about this is that you created this list. You created this list so you can keep yourself accountable and others accountable in the room for this list of agreements. And you can expand on it and add to it if you want, but I think it's a real, genuine and sincere list that will help you kind of monitor these dynamics moving forward. So Linda, I want to give you the mic, so to speak, because you requested this meeting and you started the conversation. And I, and I thank you for being so genuine and authentic and, and vulnerable and willing to do that. And I just hope that this, at least even in a small way, has fulfilled your objective.
Well, thank you to everyone, guys.
Mike, please.
I was able to attend this meeting and try to get understand and I have to, uh, agree with Nancy. A lot of the new peoples that came on do not know what really got us here and that's not the point anymore. I guess we have to move forward. I, uh, I feel better going into training tomorrow because I was just, I've been emotionally distraught over this and how people act. And everybody comes from different walks of the life and I'm not one that take things light. And my background's totally different coming out of law enforcement. It's almost like military, uh, but, and government, thirty-five years. But I love people and I don't, I, I don't have time to sit and see a lot of chaos. But I do owe Chris Cronin and Emily apologies. I think I was harder on them than I was talking to you. I mean, I was really demanding this meeting and I want to thank you guys for putting it on agenda, giving us the opportunity to vote or whatever. But it really frustrated me. I felt like the members didn't want to be heard. The Board of Directors didn't want to be heard. And it wasn't that they didn't want to be heard. I felt like it was just going too long and we need to stop and do it. So thank you guys for really, and Sammy, for, um, giving us this opportunity, staying up this late. Apologize for staff. You can write them an overtime check or let us vote on that, whatever. But thank you and attorney, the attorney and Haley, you guys for setting up so late being here. I'm sure they can adjust agenda tomorrow, sleep in a little bit. But thank you guys and I apologize if I was a little too harsh in speaking with you guys.
Well, you're putting me in a really tough spot. Can't be between people and their dinner and now people and their bedtime. I want probably about ten minutes for just where we go from here. And probably, Salam, I want to, no? Oh, please, Emily, yes. I would recommend we postpone that. And probably a special meeting in May where we can do that. Because we do have an LPC with two positions. We do have, I do need ten minutes plus these two topics. So probably twenty minutes. You want to do that? All right. All right, and we lost, we lost people. So the first thing I want to do is, before we move to the next agenda, I want to ask a few questions of you all. Are you feeling better right now than where you were at the beginning of this meeting? And do you feel we're at full hundred percent where we need to be? Okay, I hear you loud and clear. And I ask for your help shaping where we need to go. And I'll be vulnerable with you. OSBA is no longer a leadership of one, two, or five, or ten, or twenty, or even twenty-four. And maybe we'll, we'll hear more about the LPC engagements and how we're gonna uplift each and every member across Oregon and uplift each and every one of us in this board to lead where we need to go. It's difficult. We're transforming. And I can see that firsthand today, how we're transforming. So I want to thank you. And I just want to really say, I've heard about courageous conversations. We did trainings around them. I never witnessed it until I saw it today. They say the rules of courageous conversations, stay engaged, expect to experience discomfort, speak your truth, expect and accept a lack of cloyer, uh, by the end of the conversation. Toward a closure one day, but it's a process. So really want to thank you for that. I want your help where we go from here. So with that, um, I took notes. Would like to debrief with each one of you, not only with Salam, not only with Emily, but with, with each one of you, and I mean it, where we can go from here so we can shape this together. With that in mind, we are in a very important position now where, uh, three PM of Saturday is noticed and is a meeting that have to be gavelled in. And we do business according to the same agenda item that we have today, we discussed today. And for good measure, I want to ask the six people who asked for it if they are okay, given where we are tonight, that we cancel the notice for the meeting of three PM for the Board of Directors. So we only have the LPC meeting in the morning. And three PM, we don't meet together. Salam is not going to be available at that time. And several board members told me they can't stay beyond that time. So, uh, thank you. And I want to ask you, uh, so that's from you, Clyde. Rather than a motion because it's a decision of the board, but the bylaws give the six people more power over the full board. So if there's no objection, I want to ask you individually, Linda Hamilton, are you okay? We cancel the meeting tomorrow at three PM. Steve Lowell? Alonzo Oliveras? And Jackie Crook? And Greg Kent? And am I missing anyone who asked for the meeting? Okay, seeing the, those petitioners who called for the meeting, the meeting will be canceled without subjection from the full board. For a good measure, I think we're good. Now we're good to move to the next topic, which is PACE trustees' action, is Dave available for that or do we? Yes, done. Sorry, Emily.
You're good. Mr. President, I move to appoint Tim Bellinger for a third term and Brad Henry to a second term on the PACE trust board.
Is there a second? There, there has been a motion and a second, is there a discussion? For the record, I had to excuse, there, there have been several board members and representative excused, Guadalupe, is Neelam still with us?
I'm still here.
I think Sonya, is Sonya outside or no? We have a quorum. We, and Sonya is excused, is there anybody else is excused? Okay, so with excuse of those who are not present, for discussion, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those against? Passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is the appointment of LPC, OSBA LPC board member to this subject. This is an appointment for LPC board member. And there is two, for Marion County, there is two position, two applicants. So you have three options to vote for Chrissy Hudson or to vote for Merrill Stutzman, or neither. The process is detailed in the guideline. And the executive committee has approved that guideline according to the procedures. So since it is contested, when two or more applicants are being considered for the same position appointment, we announce the candidates and the board will consider and then select an applicant and opens the floor for comment on that candidate. So the first applicant we will consider, you want me to go for one candidate or you want to? Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So as the Chair for this committee, I have some concerns that neither one of these candidates really align with the mission and values of our organization. And especially since OSBA is in such a tenuous position right now. It's my opinion and recommendation that it would be better to have no one in this position for the time being than to choose someone who might not be a great fit. So my recommendation would be we choose neither for tonight and reopen the application process for later.
Okay, there was a recommendation. Yes, Chris?
I was concerned, same concern that Emily has, but also that one of the candidates did not complete their application. It was an incomplete application, so that candidate would be not eligible. We've been trying to make sure people fill it out. And again, I would rather open it back up again as Emily had suggested.
Clyde? Is anyone else? Clyde?
So I took the opportunity to reach out to both candidates. I brought up the fact of the incomplete application and false information as far as the expiration date of her service. Her expiration date of service is actually seven, or 6/30/28. And she has like 2007 in there. But I also reached out to Stutzman and I asked him why he wrote in all caps. And he said he's accustomed to writing in all caps in state documents, so he thought that was appropriate here. Had no idea what he did. And with that, I asked him about some of his values and stuff like that, and I can support that.
So I'm hearing the sentiment is alignment with the recommendation of the Chair of the LPC Committee. Is there any objection for that sentiment? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to reopen the application process for the LPC position under consideration. Emily?
Mr. President, I move that we reopen the application process for the Legislative Policy Committee for the Marion region.
Is there a second? There's a second. Is, is there any discussion on the motion? Linda and then Nancy, Linda, with the microphone, please. And I think, sorry, go ahead. All right, Linda, then Nancy, okay, Linda and then Nancy.
So reopening, will we notify these two candidates? So will we keep their application on file since they're already filed? Except for one, sounds like incomplete, right? Okay, so what we keep, will we let her know she, will she be able to reapply? Or how would we do with the ones that took the time to apply?
My understanding, they will have to reapply because it's in your process, just like how you open a position, unless there's disagreement to that?
I believe that's correct. I think we also have the option of not appointing at all, the bylaws say may, so we could wait till the next election cycle as well if we wanted to do that.
Uh, sorry, Nancy.
Because this is a voluntary situation, I think that we should encourage them to reapply, if they so choose, in the next session while we collectively gather ourselves together and continue our business. But I want to encourage them to reapply, but that's all I wanted to say, that even though we're saying no, none of the above, reapply the next time it comes open.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there any other further discussion? So on the motion? Okay, yes, on the motion, that state?
To reopen the application process for the Legislative Policy Committee, Position 12 Marion region.
Is there, all those?
A timeline to be decided at the next board meeting or?
I think the timeline established by the, by staff, am I right? Like, yeah. Yeah, timelines determined by staff, just like how they, how we do it when we declared a vacancy. So on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Anyone against? Passes unanimously. And seeing there is no further business, we'll see you tomorrow at 7:30 AM. Have a wonderful night, good night. We are adjourned.